Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the Committee on Hospitals. At this time, we ask if you can please place phones on vibrate or silent mode. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. Good afternoon, everyone. I am Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse. One thing I want to remind everyone before I go deeper is health is wealth. Thank you for joining us for this very important hearing about the state of nursing in New York City, where we'll be discussing the ongoing staff shortage crisis with an aim to collectively find solutions to help our nurses not just survive, but to thrive. As a registered nurse who has worked in the healthcare field for over three decades, this topic is very important to me and very dear to my heart. I have experienced and seen several of my fellow nurses financially, physically, and emotionally struggle due to low wages, extended working hours, and having to wear multiple hats while caring for the patients. Some of us had to pick up multiple shifts and even other jobs just to support our families, especially living in New York City. I remember as a young nurse, I got $4,000 bonus to work at Elmer's Hospital, and I accepted it in a heartbeat because it felt like there was an investment in my professional development. However, as such as we love our work as nurses, we get to serve our community. It is exhausting, tiring, and often leads to burnout when nurses do not have adequate support. As a city council member and the chair of this committee, I continue to center those experiences and listen to those who continue to be on the front line as we work together to create solutions. I heard today that we took our nurses from heroes to zeros. I'm very optimistic. I truly believe in our New Yorkers that we will address, and at the end of this hearing, that everyone will work together to bring a more positive aspect to this. Over the past two decades, advocates have been tirelessly warning us of impending healthcare staff shortage, that so it speaks during an unprecedented deadly pandemic. Like I said many times, that we knew the shortage was coming prior to talking about pandemic. When the standard ratio of one nurse to two patients went to 23 patients per nurse, that set up for disaster. According to the New York State Office of the Professions, as of January 1st, 2022, there are about 250,000 registered professional nurses residing in New York, an 18.42% decline from 2019, when the state had over 300,000 registered nurses. Research cited by the New York City Controller found that over 4,370 COVID-related deaths could have been prevented during the height of the COVID-19 pandemic if a four-patient-to-one-nurse ratio had been implemented in New York State. These numbers tell a tale of decades of negligence and failed policies. Although the pandemic is now under control, which is not really, the nurse shortage is a concerning issue. New York State Department of Health projects by 2030, New York will face a shortage of over 39,000 nurses. Nurses are the backbone of our healthcare system. They have been the heroes who were and still are in the forefront of the battle against the deadly coronavirus. Throughout the pandemic, nurses tirelessly work in horrifying conditions while being severely understaffed, overworked, and underpaid. At the peak of the pandemic, some had to wear garbage bags. We all had seen that over their bodies when PPE became unavailable. However, every day, they showed up risking their lives and the lives of their loved ones to care for New Yorkers suffering from a deadly virus without a cure. The conditions many healthcare workers faced during the pandemic have left them scared. In 2021, about 66% of the 6,000 acute and critical care nurses surveyed across the United States said they feel the pandemic has made them want to leave their profession. And about 92% believe that their experience during the pandemic caused them to consider retirement earlier than they had expected. While in another recent survey, out of the 500 nurses that participated, 2/3 said they plan to leave nursing in the next two years. Among the top concerns, 99% of the nurses indicated that is for nursing shortages. For the 3% mentioned, the cost of living, and 27% pointed to being forced to work too many hours. This is a crisis in our hands. This is a crisis of our own making, and only we can, only us can solve it. Huge changes in the policies and funding priorities will need to happen ASAP. We must work towards the financial sustainability of our hospitals and work to ensure our nurses have equitable pay. We have to incentivize them, and we have to give them better working conditions and good healthcare benefit. Furthermore, we must encourage and incentivize our Black and Brown low-income youth to bring a new generation of nurses and healthcare workers. We must create more scholarships and make the pathway to healthcare career easier and more accessible. It is time that we all come together, strategize, and get to work ASAP. I invite the brilliant minds from H&amp;H, NASNA, Greta New York, our community members and organizations to come together to create real change for our nurses, healthcare workers, our community, and our future generations. I want to conclude by thanking my staff, Said Joseph and Frank Shea, as well as the committee policy analyst, Manu Butt, for their work on this hearing. I thank you. Like I said, I'm very optimistic. Nurses are the backbone of healthcare. So I believe New York City is the greatest city, is the capital of the world, and we have to live by example. This is where we have to do it, by supporting our nurses. Thank you. I will now turn it over to committee staff to administer, oh, before I administer their oath, I would bring on NASNA, please, those that want to, that's gonna be testifying. NASNA team?
Good morning. Thank you for giving us the opportunity. Oh, it's afternoon. Apologies. My name is Nancy Higgins, and I have worked at Mamanity's Medical Center for more than 30 years in Brooklyn. I am also the elected president for the New York State Nurses Association. We represent more than 40,000 nurses across the state, and I'm also the LBU chair at Mamanity's Medical Center. Okay, that includes 20,000 public nurses and 20,000 private sectors in New York City that are currently or soon will be negotiating a new contract. New York hospitals and nursing homes are currently facing a serious staffing crisis that threatens our ability to provide timely and quality care to our patients. Nurses are leaving the bedside in our hospitals. They're not able to keep up the nurses we have, or they find, they looking, or they're not able to find new nurses who are willing to put up with the bad condition in the workplace. The main problem in New York is not that we don't have enough nurses to meet the demand. There are thousands of nurses in New York who just want, don't want to take care, to take any hospital jobs. The causes of the crisis and the nurses' workplace are obvious. But the hospitals, they don't want to invest the resources that are needed to stabilize the situation. The most immediate problem is chronic understaffing. Hospitals try to save a few dollars on payroll by ignoring our contractual staffing ratios and the requirement to improve staffing under the new staffing law. When there aren't enough nurses and the patient's assignments are too heavy, the patients suffer, and the nurses get down and start looking for new jobs. A second big problem is that the pay for nurses is not enough to make them want to put up with the stress of poor staffing and working condition. Okay, the salaries in the past two years, we are not keeping on pace with inflation and are actually lower in terms of real value. We are currently bargaining for new contracts for thousands, for thousands of nurses, and the hospitals are not even open for pay rates that will keep nurses at the bedside. Another factor in the exodus of nurses are poor working condition. Nurses are so overworked that they don't get their meal and rest break, and managers give nurses a hard time when they try to take their vacation or when they call in sick or if they require a personal sick time off. Nursing is a dangerous job that one has of the highest rate of on-the-job injuries and illnesses, and that only got worse during COVID. The punitive and dangerous conditions combine with a growing feeling that the management of the hospitals does not care or listen. That's why it's making an exodus of nurses worse. Another issue is hospitals' attempt to reduce healthcare coverage costs by cost shifting to nurses and reducing benefits. It is very ironic that the hospital are the major cause of increasing insurance costs, but want us to pay for it. Healthcare will be a big factor in our current negotiation, and if management try to cut our benefits, we will fight back hard. Another factor is the use of temporary nurse-staffing by hospital. That got even worse during the COVID. The hospitals were understaffed before COVID, and the pandemic left them scrambling to find nurses. They were already using too many temps, but now they cannot get enough staff to make regular jobs and rely more and more on temps. The agency and the traveler nurses make two to three times more than regular staff, and they can pick up and choose where and when they work. Many nurses have gotten so frustrated that they have quit and taken temporary job for the higher pay and flexibility. If we are going to go to nursing workforce, we have to stop relying on temporary staffing. The COVID crisis did not cause the problem we have, we are facing right now. They were already there. COVID just make the existing situation worse by taking the mass off the crisis. The hospital system in New York are now crying poverty and telling us that they cannot pay for better staffing and have to cut our benefits, but they have plenty of money. They pay their CEOs and top executives millions of dollars and give them big bonuses every year. Many of the big hospital system that dominates in New York make billions in profit every year and sit on even more billion in assets. They have the money they need to address the staffing crisis, but they don't want to. There are safety net hospitals like Mamanity's where I work and health and hospital that face cash flow problems, but a big part of that is caused by wealthy, big system that go after the most lucrative patients to maximize their profits and leave the safety net hospitals without enough revenue to improve their facilities. NASNA's recommendation today is to address the registered nurse shortage in New York City. First, New York City area hospital must agree to fair contract with their nurses in the count round of bargaining. RN pay rates must increase. Staffing level and nurse-to-patient ratio must be improved. Hospital must keep their hands off our health benefits. Hospitals are nonprofit, that don't pay taxes, and are not supposed to hold money. The city should look at their tax exemptions and use its zoning and regulatory power to make them improve working condition and patient care. Hospital have to stop relying on temporary staffing and use the huge amount of money to pay for temp to build a permanent workforce. The city should push hospitals to increase tuition support, mentorships, apprenticeships, and other programs to address racial and social inequities and recruit loyal youth to work in our hospital. Most important, hospital need to listen and respect the nurses. And, um, thank you. Our executive director, Pat Kane, also wrote a testimony. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here, and she asked me to address and read the testimony.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else with you that testifying from the NASNA?
Yes, yes.
The executive, okay, so it will be after.
I'll be, yes, I'll be.
So you're the one that gonna answer my questions?
As much as I can.
All right.
Okay, this is from Pat Kane, our executive director. Or do you have questions for me before?
Okay, so are you gonna read, Pat, testimony?
Yes.
Okay, so go on.
Okay, thank you. My name is Pat Kane, and I'm the executive director of the New York State Nurses Association. NASNA represent more than 40,000 nurses across the state. That include more than 20,000 city nurses and private hospital and New York City Health and Hospital System and the city that are currently in negotiation or soon will be negotiating new contract. These negotiations are taking place in the context of intense staffing crisis that is not the result of lack of nurses. The staffing crisis is a result of mass exodus of nurses from hospital and nursing homes because they are fed up with understaffing caused by hospital management, poor working condition, inadequate pay, and stress of trying to provide safe patient care for patients while management ignored our concern and nickel and dimos. This staffing crisis and its causes are the focus of much of the testimony that you will hear today from many of our frontline workers like our president Nancy Higgins. In our negotiations, the employers are claiming poverty in the face of high health insurance costs for their nurses and trying to cut our benefits and shift more of the cost to their nurses in the form of higher deductible or copays. First, I want to first point out that these claims of poverty are bogus. The hospitals can afford to pay for our health benefits. The large hospitals are making a lot of money. Presbyterian made more than $1 billion in profit in 2021 and is sitting on more than $19 billion in assets. Mount Sinai made more than $185 million in profit and has more than $6 billion in assets. Northwell made more than $177 million in profit plus $460 million in investment income and also has more than $19 billions in assets. These hospitals are also on spending spree when it comes to their executive pay packages. The CEOs and executives of the big hospital network are giving themselves big raises and handing out executive bonuses like Halloween candy. The CEO of Presbyterian made $12 million in 2019. The CEO of Mount Sinai made $5.6 million in 2019. The CEO of Northwell made $4 million in 2019. In 2020, 364 top executives of New York hospital received more than $70 million in bonuses. 10 executives received more than $1 million in bonuses, and other, other 40 got at least $500,000. These hospitals have hundreds of executives who receive million or more in compensation each year. At Presbyterian, for example, there are at least 29 executives who earned $1 million or more in 2019. By way of comparison, the CEO of the 11 hospital health, health and hospital public network only receive about $700,000 in pay. Second, I will note that it is the hospital that are the cause of, the cause of the health insurance cost increases. Health insurance costs have been growing at a rate that far outpaced the rate of inflation and the pay of nurses and other workers. In the last 12 months, the inflation rate in New York City was about 6% lower than national average, but healthcare costs rose 7.9%. Hospital prices, hospital price increases are more major drivers of increasing healthcare costs. In 2009, hospital prices have gone by 80% compared to less than 50% for non-hospital care and 30% for prescription. Much of the increase in hospital costs is the result of price gouging and profit maximizing by the same hospital CEOs that pay themselves so well. This private hospital charge exhibit prices that are on the average 316% of the rate paid by Medicare and some hospital system, which more than 390% of the Medicare rate, according to analysis by SEIU 32BJ member health plan. There are plenty of example and data showing the degree of price gouging. For example, a normal vaginal birth at a New York City Health and Hospital costs $11,000, while the same procedure costs $41,000 at Montefiore Hospital, $33,000 at New York Presbyterian, $24,000 at Northwell. It is beyond ironic to hear that these hospitals say that they cannot afford our healthcare coverage when they are making huge profit and complaining about the same healthcare costs that they themselves have jacked up. Finally, I want to point out that RN health costs are higher now because they worked through the pandemic. They were disproportionately exposed to and sickened by COVID-19, while the CEOs were mostly calling from home or playing golf in Florida. COVID-related costs have added to the cost of healthcare for nurses because of the cost of treating them and their family members when they got sick, getting COVID tested, and dealing with the impact of long COVID. So that the hospital are trying to do our healthcare coverage, what do they want to do? They want to impose managed care program to limit access to diabetes, COPD, asthma, hepatitis, and oncology rate. Restrict access to physical therapy, chiropractors for a profession with one of the highest rate of musculoskeletal injury rates. Require a step therapy program, exclude high-cost generic drugs, and increase pharmacy copay to limit our access to medication, and increase emergency room and ambulance copay. What do hospitals need to do to provide healthcare coverage for our nurses? They need to keep their hands off our health coverage. Nursing is one of the most dangerous occupation, and we need decent health coverage and if we are going to attract and retain our nurses. The hospital should pay up for our health coverage and stop complaining that they cannot afford it, while we know they can afford it. If they want to lower the cost of our coverage, they should start by lowering the amount that they charge us and other patient who needs their healthcare services. Thank you.
Airful, but before I get to the question, I would like to recognize my colleagues, CM Moya, CM Baron, and we have Cindy Nurse right with us. Thank you. And Baron is in remote, and Moya is remote. What does a day of work look like for a nurse? How much does short staffing affect a nurse's productivity? How many New York City-based nurses does NYSE represent? Can you tell us more about the demographics of these nurses? Race, gender, age, socioeconomic background, specialty? But having said that, you don't have to give me all the statistic if you don't have it. I don't want to scare you away.
I don't have all the statistic, but I would tell you, we have over 42,000 nurses, and then we are a multicultural union when it comes to age gap. As you know, most of our nurses are between 50 and up, and then we are trying to attract young nurses, and the young people are not going into the profession anymore, as we discussed, because hospitals are not able to employ and attract young nurses. And one of the biggest reason, most hospitals are not even hiring a nurse, especially the private hospital with an associate degree. You have to have a bachelor's degree. And if you come from a background where you cannot afford to go to a four-year college, now when you receive an associate degree, then most of the nurses will probably working up in the public sector, and once they receive their bachelor's, they will move on to a private hospital.
And once they receive their bachelors, they will move on to a private hospital because of the pay disparities. Because a private sector paid about seventeen thousand dollars more than a public. As an ICU nurse, as a nurse for thirty seven years, what is it like to work in a unit? In a unit where it's a full trauma center, you walked in, your patient should be a one-to-one. By the time you walked in, the manager said to you, you already had three sick call. Today you have to take three patients that are not only on ECO, on a BiPAP, on drip or drips. And you will be lucky if you have a cup of coffee. And then you don't have that time to even hold the patient's hand, okay? The unit is a neuro ICU unit. And as we know, I'm not trying to scare anybody. If you're a woman between forty to sixty, the ages of having an intracerebral bleed and an annual aneurysm is very high. I walked in, forty two years old, at dinner with their husband. Become unconscious and they walked in, the next thing you walk to the family member and say. Unfortunately, your loved one is breathing, but your loved one is considered brand dead. And then you would like to spend that time with that family member and have a conversation. And nursing is not just giving medication to your patient, is to be able to provide the social needs. The human touch, but the next door, your patient is going into cardiac arrest. Now, you leaving this family member who needs you. It's about eleven o'clock, twelve o'clock, you're here at seven thirty. Did anybody ask you whether you had a cup of coffee for that day? Because if you didn't have a cup of coffee driving to work, that cup of coffee will be your only meal and your only break for that time. And what is the management doing? Do the best that you can. Oh yeah, we'll send pizza to the lounge. We all know who's gonna eat that pizza, the managers or sometimes the doctors. Because you don't have time for the pizza. Normally, we say keep the pizza. Med surg, med surg unit honestly should be what, one to five, one to four? Most of the patients on the med surg units are considered ICU level. So what do they do? They play games with you. They'll say, well, we'll start a little bit of neoson effort drips, a little Epi drips. And then when we have an ICU bed, we'll transfer the patient, which is not true. Now, as a med surg nurse, I have eight patients. Four of them are on telemetry, but I'm not even trained to read an EKG. I don't even know what a V fib is, what a V tag. I'm lucky if I could recognize an assistively, a flat line. But what do they tell you? Do the best that you can. Do we honestly think that we are providing the right care for the patients? Because what they do, a nurse is a nurse is a nurse. During the height of the pandemic, we did the best that we can to care for a patient. To save New York, because if we were prepared, we would have saved more lives. But what do they do in the hospital? They continue to mandate the nurses. They continue to do the same practice during the height of the pandemic by not hiring enough nurses. What it's like to be a nurse is to leave your house at five thirty in the morning. And you don't get home till midnight or one o'clock in the morning. Do you know why? Because they don't have anyone to replace you. And your hospital manager at five o'clock, she has a packet book, she's going home, but you're being mandated to stay.
It's not easy, being there on it. According to your experience, what is the average nurse to patient ratio? I don't know if you have that in H and H, I'm sure you do because you have nurses in H. What is the average nurse to patient ratio to the private volunteer hospitals? How often are new nurses hired in H and H and volunteer hospital?
Well, the H and H, they do have ratios, but there's staffing shortage. I mean, I've spoken to the nurses, some of them have nine, ten patients, where it should be a one to six, one to five.
One to six, one to five?
Right, that should be.
That should be, but what it is right now?
One to ten, one to nine.
One to ten, one to nine in H and H or in?
In H and H and also in the private sector. A lot of people, yes, I work in a facility where sometimes the nurses have ten patients, eleven patients on the med surg. And three of them could be a telemetry patient.
For the med surg and about the ICU?
ICU, the ratio should be on a very ill patient, one to one. Not so ill, one to two, but average, a nurse have three patients, sometimes four. Telemetry unit should be one to four, on an average, it's six patients.
Okay, how often are new nurses hired in H and H and volunteer hospital?
I'm not, I don't have the right number for the H and H. Even the voluntary hospital, they're not hiring. What they are saying to us, we are trying, we are recruiting, but we don't see. I mean, you have a place like Mount Sinai and they have a total of over eight hundred vacancies. So obviously, they are not hiring, yes.
Okay. In your own, because I'm not pushing you for the data if you don't have them. But are new hires tend to be seasoned professionals or fresh graduates?
Most of the new hires are fresh graduates. But I will tell you, by week two or three of orientation, most of them quit. I have new orienters come to me and say, that's not what I signed up for nursing school, I am leaving. I'll give you an example, the facility where I work. As a new hire, you're not supposed to float from one unit to another for six months. These new nurses come from orientation today, the next day they come to work, they send them in a different unit to work. And they are scared, they are devastated. And then they are leaving the profession. They'll say to me, I'm not coming back tomorrow.
That would be my next question, how long you think they stay at the job right now? Approximate, you don't have to be.
The new hires, some of them, two months, three months?
Two months, two months.
Yes, some of them right in the midst of orientation, by the time they go to the units. They see the working condition, what they have to do as new nurses. Because they feel like they have other choices, there are other things they could do, they just say, you know, here's my ID, I'm not coming back.
That's bad. Over the past two years, there has been a rise in temporary traveling nurses, right? What do you think many nurses are choosing that pathway instead of working full-time in a hospital?
Well, the traveling nurses are making two to three times more than a regular nurse.
Is it salaries then?
Yeah, the staff nurse and the travelers, they pick a date that they work. I've seen travelers come in and say, well, I'm only gonna pick two patients. Because my contract from my traveling agency allow me to have two patients. And the supervisor turn and say, well, they're doing you a favor. You take the six patients and have the traveler taking two patients. And they making three times, so the nurses are frustrated. So what they've done, they've resigned from their position and say, you know what? I'm gonna sign up to be a traveler as well.
Wow, so are traveling nurses helpful in curbing the nurses shortage that we have?
The help that we need.
The way you said it seemed like they're not helpful, because they come to do two patient, they're not.
Because they've given them a better, it's not about, you know. Even talking about putting down the traveling nurses, it's just, I put it that management, the managers, the hospitals. Are actually putting nurses against each other. Because why would you bring in somebody and pay them three times more than someone else? When you have so many vacancies, if you increase the raise. If you give nurses across the board in New York State, New York City a raise. And these people will actually apply for the job and work permanently. Because remember, the traveling nurses are only there for twelve weeks. And then the next week, some of them said they want to travel, they'll go to Hawaii, they'll go to California. So why would you invest thousands, a million of dollars on someone for twelve weeks? When you have nurses here in New York State, we have so many nurses that we could attract. What they need to do is improve the pay and prove the working condition. Because I called, hiring a traveler, it's like, you're a nurse, I'm a nurse, you have a bleed. You should put a tourniquet, right, and take the patients to the OR. But if you just apply the tourniquet, the bleed is still gonna be there. You have to treat it and we have to treat the problem. And the problem is not treating, the hiring travelers are not treating the problem. You could hire a traveler, if you have fifty nurses on orientation. And they cannot come off orientation for the next six to eight weeks. Then you could bring some temporary to fill up until you start them. But travelers are coming in and management are not replacing them, replacing the staff. Because one of the reason, well, they have to pay medical and they don't want to invest in us.
Okay, we get this. For COVID, COVID nineteen, how many nurses are suffering from mental health? From, if you have statistic, you can give it, if not, you just, we can always get it back from you guys.
Yeah, we could provide.
How many nurses are suffering from mental health issues like PTSD due to their experience during the pandemic?
Well, most of our nurses, I don't want to say a hundred percent, most of our nurses, if you pull the nurses. Who worked during the pandemic, they are suffering. Some of our colleagues cannot go to sleep at night. They still see the reality, some of our colleagues are still seeking for help. And a lot of time, you cannot even have a day off just to go for therapy. And for any of us who's seeking for mental health, especially in New York. It's very difficult to find a provider that would even accept your insurance. A lot of time you have to pay out of pocket, it's very difficult. Most of our nurses are devastated because when we went to work, when we became nurses, nurses to nurse. And we couldn't save as many patients as possible. Some of our nurses are still, some people just can't come to work because of what happened and need the self-care. And the nursing profession, when you have an issue, when you lose your patient. All they expect from you is to go to the bathroom, wipe your eyes with a tissue and then go to the next patient. Any other profession, if you work and for the fire department, even if you're a police officer, you had such tragic. They give you a couple of weeks or sometimes to, you know, pull yourself together. As nurses, we don't have that ability. It's, you know what, get over it Nancy, you're next for the next admission. There's a, you know, motorcycle accident, there's somebody coming in. You only have a second or two, you as a nurse, you know the reality, just to pull yourself together. After a while, it takes a toll on you. I mean, during COVID, there were members who would call and say, I'm sitting in my driveway. I cannot go inside my house because I lost too many patients today. And these colleagues are still seeking for help, for mental help and needs help. And then management still expects you to come up to work now and still work understaffed. And not able to care for yourself. As nurses, we're not providing a day, a personal day to do self-care. That does not exist.
Do you think that the mental health coverage is adequate for you, for the nurses?
I don't believe so, no.
You don't think so?
No.
Have you done any organizational survey among nurses in NYSE about the burnout or their demands? If so, what were the results? If not, are you considering conducting?
We have done it, but we could provide the results to you.
Okay, I see some of your policy recommendation. So whatever you have, you can send it to us too. Do you believe that nurses' biggest needs are at the moment? What are they? What does the ideal nursing job look like? And what's the ratio recommendation according to your experience and from NYSE?
Okay, first, what do we recommend as nurses? First and top priority is staffing, is safe staffing, safe patient nurse to staffing ratio. Not only in the rich hospital, across every hospital in New York City. Whatever the zip code is, because during the height of the pandemic, we saw who suffer. It was more the black and the brown community because of lack of care. We would like to see more investment in our safety net hospital, in our H and H hospital. And we want safe staffing across, and we want equity pay. And we want to be properly compensated for the work that we've done. As you know, we said earlier, during the time we were considered hero, now we are actually at zero. And we want to change that. And also, we want to continue to have great and proper medical coverage. You cannot expect us to provide care for patients. And when it's time for us to receive care as patients and we don't have that opportunity. As a nurse, once you turn forty or fifty, your body. Does not belong to you anymore because of the lifting and the kind of heavy duty work that we do. So for the hospital corporation and the hospital agreed to say that they're gonna cut our medical coverage, it's unacceptable. Okay, it's not about an ideal work, it's about that we live in the richest country in the world. Why can't we provide safe, quality patient care to everyone? Regardless of their zip code, regardless of their financial status, regardless of their immigration status.
What incentives could make the entry into nursing more attractive or easier to accomplish? Because we need nurses now.
We do, we have to start going to the high school, the local area. And help, you know, some of us to go to school. I mean, I'm an immigrant generation, my parents had ten children. So I had to basically pay my way to go to college because they couldn't afford to send me to college, we did it. But if we had a loan repayment program, if we allow nurses to practice with an associate degree. And have a lot of hospitals, they have the funds to help pay their student loan, we would attract more nurses. And if we were to make the pay attractive, then we would have more nurses and also the staffing. We need to go out there and recruit from our community. Because there are a lot of young people that are interested in nursing. But if we don't explain to them and teach them and what it's like to be part of the community and help them. We're never gonna be able to attract enough nurses.
I appreciate your time as a nurse, and by the way, ER nurse, you know how a body get.
Yes.
For an ER nurse. Now, I'm gonna pass it to my colleague, nurse, any questions for the NYSE? You have any questions for them? Not now? That has roles? Okay, you?
I have the same, but I just want to thank you for everything that you've shared. I think especially for us that represent our constituencies in the outer boroughs. We know hard body, how much work you have all done for years, but specifically during the pandemic. And I just want to thank you for your testimony. I'm curious in your experiences, where you've seen mental health, but more specific. And like suicide prevention, and I don't know if you have that, but I do know that during the pandemic. Residents were experiencing suicide at much higher rates, which is, they're normally high, but during the pandemic, they were high. But can you speak to that a little bit more in your experience, kind of where you were seeing suicide rates? Or just the efforts for suicide prevention for nurses, especially during the pandemic, if that's something that you could speak to?
Well, the way I would speak to it, I think as a community, we do not address mental health enough. And some, my community, sometimes it's a taboo, you can't even say to someone, I'm not feeling well or I need to see a therapist. Everything is a big secret, so imagine during the pandemic, everybody's messed up. You walked in, you have ten patients, by the time you're going home, eight of them already died. They were not able to be with their loved ones, you know? You probably have to call someone on the phone and you watch them take their last breath. And we're talking about twenty five year old, twenty year old who's never been sick in their lives. And there was not an outlet where as a healthcare professional provider, you could express. What you had to go through, what you were feeling. So by the time you're supposed to go to work, our goal is to make everyone better. As a nurse, you are to nurse somebody and let them go home. And when you lose a patient, you start questioning yourself, what could I have done? Could I have done just to make it better? And then there's no outlet for nurses, there's no outlet for even the residents, the medical profession. Sometimes we sit there at work, we talk about it, who do you talk to when you have a situation like that? Then you internalize it and then, then that's where the depression comes in. But we also have to look as a community, how do we address mental illness? Right now, hospitals are closing a lot of psych units because they feel that they don't make enough money. There is not a profit. And if you were to find a provider to see you, the first thing they'll tell you, I'm only gonna accept you out of pocket. I don't accept any insurance, so you have to care for yourself that way.
And from your perspective, on the heels of the mayor's announcement of involuntary admission. Of New Yorkers into hospitals. I vehemently disagree with that for all of the reasons that you've highlighted, for all of the reasons that you highlighted, the levels of support that are lacking. What, what is your reaction to that? What are some of the conversations, if any, that maybe the administration had with? with, with Neisna, for example, beforehand? And what are some of the things that you need to see, uh, in order for this to be a, a program that really resolves the issue?
We haven't had any conversation with the mayor's office, but I could put it like that. Um, I'm into planting. If you have a little tree, you have to grow the tree straight. If the tree look a little crooked, you actually have to, you know, have support. So the support have to start from the get-go. So what we do as a community, we don't acknowledge someone has an illness until it's too late. And, you know, your brain also is an organ. You know, if you had a problem with your heart, you would go to the doctor. If you had a problem with your leg. But when we have, you know, mental issue, mental distress, we don't have a place for people to go. We don't have enough providers. We don't have enough doctors. We don't have enough hospital beds in order to address someone's situation. You put somebody on medication, but you don't know where they live and then you send them out. How do we know they're taking their medication? Who's following up?
Yeah.
So we really need to look at the whole system, how we address mental illness.
So this announcement essentially compounds existing issues that we already have in our facilities to begin with, with very little, I think recourse for increasing hospital beds, which you said we have less than ever before, and support for nurses and medical staff amidst a nurse shortage. Uh, thank you for, for your testimony. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. You. Um, now, I am for my colleagues online. Um, C Moya Baron. Um, we don't have the quorum, but if you have any questions, you can actually text it to me and I will ask for you. But, um, just text me and let me know. So for now.
Wait, you can't hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, but we don't have a quorum.
Why can't I just talk? Why I have to text you?
Um, because we don't have a quorum, because we don't have enough, um, see, I'm in council member here.
Well, so I can't talk because you don't have a quorum?
No, you can ask the, you cannot ask the question to.
Why? Because you don't have a quorum? I can't ask a question? Now, when you don't have a quorum, you can't take a vote on anything. But because you don't have a quorum, don't mean I can't ask a question or make a comment?
Um, C M, I didn't make the rules.
So the council members that are present can speak and ask questions?
Yes.
But if we're online, we can't?
Unfortunately.
Who made that rule up?
So that's.
I could have done my question in then by now.
I didn't start it, certainly. I just got here in January.
You are absolutely right, Charles.
See, that doesn't make any sense?
Okay.
Well, let me ask you this. If you, if you let me ask a question, will you get fired? I mean, people hide you, so you can't get fired.
I mean, Charles, what's the question? I guess I'm going to repeat it or you don't know, you don't have access to text?
No.
You're gonna, okay. Uh, yeah, call, we're going to call you and put you on speaker. I guess that's how we're going to do it. Because she's going to talk to you, because that's the rule. I have to follow rules.
So you're going to call me on my phone?
Your best friend going to call you.
Wow, this is deep.
Repeat it for him. Yes. So she's calling you now. So pick up the phone. Because your question always very valuable to me and to everyone, so.
I can ask that if you want. Tell me.
Bear with us.
Sure. Mm-hmm. Hmm? Thank you. So, um, repeating what Councilmember Baron's question is, uh, he wanted to just commend the work of the nurses at Brookdale Hospital. He said he was treated tremendously when he had COVID and recognizes that nurses are obviously overworked, underpaid. Um, his question is related to housing. Um, and I know in reviewing the report, that is one of the top issues for nurses. He said in his conversations with developers, for example, there are specific set-asides for veterans, for people in other professions. Um, but is there an existing program for nurses in a way to retain nurses that, uh, will put a set aside for housing for nurses in these instances? Is there a movement, uh, in the conversation of this nature? Does that sound right, Charles?
Um.
Okay.
I mean, we always open for that movement? No, not right now.
But no, no, no conversation, nobody started that? But do you recognize that that is a top issue for nurses?
One of the issues, housing?
Top issues, would that be, um, a way to help retain nurses?
Right, to retain nurses. And our biggest top issues would be, uh, you know, priority with the staffing, would pay equity, and then it would also help us to afford
That's right.
a place to live and, um, housing, better housing.
Charles says, "Thank you so much for the work that you are all doing. It's a thankless job, but it is very much appreciated." All right, Charles, I'm going to let you go.
And thank you for your understanding. I did not make the rule. So, right? So thank you so much for your time. Any question, my colleagues? No? You're good? All right. So we're moving forward. Now I will turn it over to committee counsel to administer the oath. So we're calling, um, H and H. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Um, we will now hear testimony from the members of the administration. Will you please raise your right hand? Thank you. Do you affirm to tell the truth and the whole truth and nothing but the truth before this committee? And to respond honestly to the council member's question?
I do.
Thank you. You may begin whenever you're ready.
Good morning, Chairwoman Narcisse and members of the Committee on Hospitals. I am Dr. Natalia Sinius, Chief Nurse Executive and Co-Chair of the Equity and Access Council at New York City Health and Hospitals. Thank you for the opportunity to testify regarding the state of nursing at health and hospitals. While health and hospitals is only one component of a much larger healthcare delivery system and workforce landscape in our city, we are proud of what we do. Our team of about eight thousand nurses is at the core of our mission to provide care to all New Yorkers. Our nurses are on the front lines of our hospitals, clinics, and nursing homes, delivering high-quality and compassionate care to our patients. Currently, there is a nationwide and industry-wide shortage of nurses from which health and hospitals is no exception. While we have had staffing challenges like most other health systems across the country, we continue to provide uninterrupted care and have taken steps to retain our current nurses and fill vacancies. We are engaged in a variety of efforts to provide incentives for currently-employed nurses to remain in our systems, which includes converting temporary positions to permanent positions, partnering with CUNY to offer fifty nursing advanced credit-bearing certificate and degree programs to current nursing staff and loan forgiveness. We have also established several professional development opportunities for nurses, including a preceptor program, a clinical ladder program, a nurse residency program, and also a nurse recognition program. In particularly, our nurse residency program enables student nurses to transition confidently to become licensed professional nurses through group seminars on topics like decision-making, conflict resolution, end-of-life care, healthcare quality, patient safety, and more. In addition, participants receive support, build relationships with nursing peers, and develop leadership skills. As a result, our nurse retention has more than doubled for new nurses in the nurse residency program over the last three years. The retention incentives also play a crucial role of in our recruitment efforts. Health and hospitals recruits nurses to fill vacancies through traditional means, innovative strategies, and working with partner institutions. Our traditional methods include conducting monthly hiring fairs and posting advertisements on job sites like Indeed, LinkedIn, and others, while making it as convenient as possible for candidates to interview and onboard with us by offering virtual and on-the-spot interviews as well as on-the-spot onboarding. Our innovative strategies include Nurses for NYC campaign, which has been dedicated with a webpage and social media presence to fill nursing positions in high-need areas. The campaign disseminates many documentary videos featuring individual nurses from different facilities and specialty areas. We're excited about our partnership with CUNY to expand career pathways for graduating nurses to enter our system, which is a proud largest employer of CUNY nurses in the city. Our enhanced partnership builds upon existing initiatives like having over one thousand CUNY nursing students support COVID-nineteen vaccination efforts in the spring of 2021. Recognizing the toll that the pandemic has taken on nurses and other frontline healthcare workers, Health and Hospitals has taken proactive steps to promote wellness among our nursing staff. In particular, our nursing development programs, including the nurse residency program, provides nurses with support and mentorship. In addition, we have worked to implement staffing models to reduce our nurses' workload. Nurses can also take advantage of our Helping Healers Heal or H3 program, which focuses not only on addressing emotional and psychosocial needs and psychological needs of our nurses in response to adverse events, but also on proactively establishing relationships and spaces to promote overall wellness and resiliency. H3 provides an anonymous internal support hotline where staff can receive psychological and emotional counseling from licensed clinicians, as well as individual and group settings where staff can receive support. We are proud of our wellness rooms, which provide a calming space for staff to decompress in many of our facilities and are grateful for the public and private support that has enabled us to upgrade them. New York City Health and Hospitals, Kings County, and New York City Health and Hospitals South Brooklyn Health were recently recognized for their commitment to creating a healthy work environment for their nurses through the prestigious Pathway to Excellence designation from the American Nurses Credentialing Center. New York City Health and Hospitals Kings County and New York City Health and Hospitals South Brooklyn Health are the first and second hospitals in Brooklyn to receive the distinction and are two of only three facilities in New York City with the credential. The Pathway to Excellence designation requires a rigorous process to evaluate progress in six standards: shared decision-making, leadership, safety, quality, and well-being, and professional development. We appreciate this recognition and are committed to ensuring that our nurses feel empowered and valued in the workplace. It is the mission of Health and Hospitals to deliver high-quality health services with compassion, with dignity, and respect to all without exception. We are immensely grateful for and proud of the work that our nurses do every day to advance our mission. And they are committed, and we are committed to supporting them day in and day out, just as they are committed. Thank you to the committee for the opportunity to testify and for your continued support of Health and Hospitals. I look forward to our continued partnership and happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And yesterday, I was happy to be there with you guys at South Brooklyn. Because, um, let it be known that I do not have any healthcare center in the Forty-Sixth District, and I do not have any hospitals. So I relied on you, Cuny Island, and on the part of, um, Bookdale and Kings County, of course. So how many full-time nurses are working in H and H facilities?
We have over eight thousand nurses at Health and Hospitals across our system.
Okay. How many positions are filled by temporary nurses or travel nurses, if any? When do you estimate these temporary positions will be replaced with full-time staff?
On any given day, we have up to a couple of hundreds. So I would say two hundred temporary nurses on any given day. We are converting some of our temporary nurses to full-time. That's part of our process. And the goal is to hire our nurses full-time versus depending on temporary staff. The majority, I would say.
Okay. How much of your budget is reserved for increasing nurse wages?
That is a challenge, and I think we would have to get back to you with the figure on that. I think, you know, Health and Hospitals is faced with the challenges across the nation, but we are unique because we are a safety net system. And we do struggle financially in terms of competing with the other systems near us. And so I think that is a differentiating factor for us that makes it even harder for us.
How much is needed, you know, to hire more full-time nurses? Do you know how much?
I would love to get back to you on that in terms of the discrepancy from salaries. I, I can't answer that right now.
Okay. What is the average weekly pay for a full-time registered nurse and a traveling IRN?
Sure, so.
The, the full-time registered nurse?
Full-time. So the base salary of our full-time nurses is approximately eighty-four thousand, seven hundred, forty-four. I would have to divide that by the weeks to get you the weekly, but that's the annual salary.
Mm-hmm, got you.
Temporary fluctuates. And as we all know, there are no regulations for temp nurses. And so it's very hard to tell what a temp nurse makes because we're actually paying an agency, which takes a cut of that amount. Um, I'm not privy to the information in terms of how much the actual nurse makes, but I can tell you that it fluctuates. So during the pandemic, we saw very high rates, up to two hundred per hour for nurses that we've all seen across the country. Um, and then it'll go down to near seventy dollars, ninety dollars per hour. And then if we're surging, such as RSV or monkeypox or COVID-nineteen vaccines, we'll see an increase in the rate. So it's very hard to tell because we're not in control of that, the temp salaries.
Okay. Has any funding been allocated to nurses hazard pay?
So right now, we're focusing more on the work care, healthcare workers' bonus program. So five thousand nurses have received the bonus program that was state-funded at Health and Hospitals.
So how do you ensure that nurses are paid a living wage?
We do the best that we can. So, you know, during our last contract, we partnered with our Neisna partners, who are here today, many of them, to see what we can do. And so we, of course, work with the city in terms of the increase in their base pay, and we added a lot of differentials related to certifications, education, a nurse retention program, and also, um, a financial aspect to the nurse residency program as well once they complete their portfolios. And so we added a lot of differentials to increase that salary to help our nurses with their wages.
Okay. Do their salaries and pay reflect inflation and the cost of living in New York City?
I think that New York City Health and Hospitals has done the best that we can do in the past. I, I think there are definitely challenges now as we're seeing the living wages here in New York City increase. And I think we will need support to do more. And I think we've done our best, given the financial struggles that we face. But we're doing our best to ensure that we support our nurses because we value our nurses.
Do you think that the mental health benefits for nurses are adequate? Because we tried, asked her to.
Yeah.
Do you think?
I must say, Health and Hospitals, we've done a phenomenal job when it comes to well-being. We hired a chief wellness officer during the pandemic. We have a virtual express care hotline that's twenty-four-seven that allows a nurse to call a hotline if they're feeling anxious, if they need to debrief. We also have a robust Helping Healers Heal program, which I talked about during my testimony, which we also call H3. So if there's anything that happens on any of the units, we debrief immediately. We have monthly programs around wellness across the system. Most recently, we just conducted employee engagement survey, and well-being was part of that. So as an executive team, we reviewed the results, and we have an action plan in place. So I must say, we do a phenomenal job working with our partners in behavioral health and the quality department to ensure that we're supporting our nurses from a psychological perspective.
So my understanding is just like you're providing a lot of support?
Yes.
But in general, of the health, mental health benefits? Have you heard any complaint that it's not enough? Or that's the reason that you going extra mile to support, to provide? to support, to provide a support system within the hospital?
So I have not heard anything about the health benefits not being enough. The reason why we have established such a robust program is because, and we actually started this program before the pandemic. But I think during the pandemic, we all knew that we were living in a crisis and we had to do more, which is why we ramped up what we were doing. We also implemented wellness rooms, which we saw over 93,000 visits in our wellness spaces. And so I think that the benefits of our nurses is something that we keep very private because of HIPAA. And so I've not asked for how many people are utilizing mental health benefits, and I have not heard anything. But I think that, given the times that we're living in, we've noticed that there is a need to increase supporting nurses and physicians in terms of mental health.
Over the last two years, 26,219 complaints have been filed by NYSE regarding staff shortages, which is the equivalent of almost 35.9 complaints per day, every day, for 730 days. An overwhelming majority of nurses' biggest concern is staff shortage. What strategies is H&amp;H implementing to address this issue?
So New York City Health and Hospitals, we're meeting monthly to host virtual hiring fairs. And we started that because of the pandemic and the social distancing aspect of recruitment. We also have the nurse... We also have the recruitment forums in terms of loan forgiveness. We're also working on ensuring that we're recruiting with our local schools. So I have personally met with all local deans to ensure that we're creating pipelines. As I mentioned in my testimony, we're working very closely with CUNY to ensure that we have pipelines to recruit nurses. And so we're doing a multi-pronged approach, where I'm also most recently starting a program with the Department of Education to go to middle schools, not just high schools, but to start talking about the nursing profession. And so we're really doing a lot to ensure that we're connecting with our nurses. And as I mentioned, we also have the Nurses for NYC Campaign. Because given the public health crisis, we want to make sure that we're recruiting nurses that really connect to our mission and vision at Health and Hospitals. So it's a multi-pronged approach. And we're doing everything that we possibly can to recruit aggressively and expeditiously.
And I have to honestly say thank you because you're a nurse, and I'm happy to ask this question. And I'm expect for you to be honest because we're talking about the colleagues, right?
Of course.
An overwhelming majority of nurses' biggest concern is staff shortage. We talk about that. The strategy you being using right now? I know you've been saying you're doing a lot, guys. How many vacancy does H&amp;H have at the moment?
Sure. So right now, we, I would say that our vacancies fluctuate. So most recently, we hired about 400 nurses from July to November. We would have, right now, in acute care settings, about 1,000 vacancies. We just recruited 400 of them. And so we're doing a lot every month. We're, on average, hiring about 200 nurses to really close that gap and to support that with additional staffing as well. And that's across the entire system.
So how soon you expect those vacancies to be filled?
Well, those vacancies are also a result of us hiring more nurses. So we've worked very closely with NISNA with new ratios in our last contract to ensure that we're meeting those ratios. And we should be able to close that gap very soon.
Are you working closely with NYSE too?
Absolutely. So as part of the New York State Staffing Committee, we work very closely with NISNA. We meet with them on a regular basis. And we are ensuring that there are other mechanisms in place, such as, you know, using per diem nurses, using temp nurses in the interim as we close this gap.
How often are new nurses hired in the H&amp;H hospitals?
The new nurses...
How often you...
So as I mentioned earlier, we meet weekly for hiring, and every month, we're hiring new nurses.
How many recent graduates that you got in H&amp;H?
So the 400 nurses from July to November includes a lot of new nurses. So we ensure that as we're hiring new nurses, that we are supporting them. And so we most recently had 1,023 nurses...
1,000?
23 new nurses in the nurse residency program over the last three years. So this is just for new nurses that we're supporting as we're hiring them. But out of the 400 nurses, majority of those nurses are new nurses.
All right. So experienced nurses, do they come to you? Because I know H&amp;H is known to be the kind of like a stepping ground for training school.
It's very challenging.
After you finish, that's where you come?
Yeah. The experienced nurses that we...
You get experiences, experienced nurses?
Thank you for the question. The experienced nurses that we receive are typically transfers from within the system, which is a wonderful thing when our nurses stay within the system. But to your point, sometimes they do leave to go to other systems.
Okay. Is there, there a tracker that regularly, I mean regularly updated, I mean updates the number of nurses or nurse-to-patient ratio in each of H&amp;H hospitals?
So we're, right now, we are working on technology to ensure that we are tracking. So we have a scheduling system where we know what nurses are working. But we're working on a very rigorous platform to ensure that we're able to track and create reports for day-to-day, second-by-second staffing.
So you have a tracker? Or you don't have a tracker? Or you working on it?
We have a tracker, but it's not as robust as it needs to be. And so we're working on implementing a new platform in the next year. So right now, it's very manual entry, but we want to do something that's more automated at New York City Health and Hospitals.
Is that public knowledge? Like if we want to see it, can we see it? Can you share it?
The tracker?
Like what you have this, the data? I mean, the data that you have?
Of course. We can provide that too.
Can you share it?
Yes.
What is the ideal nurse-to-patient ratio for you? As far as, because you are a nurse in your hospital?
Absolutely. So I would say that I had an integral role in working with NISNA during our last contract. And I stand by what we worked on together. And I believe in the ratios in our contract.
So you're not, you cannot tell me? Because it's...
I'm sorry.
Exactly, what's the ratio? Like say ICU, are you working on...
For the ICU, it's approximately, depending on the patient that you have, it can be 1 to 2, it can be 1 to 1.5. For med surg, it could be 1 to 6. I'm sorry? Did I? So let me just start over again.
There's a disagreement somewhere, I guess.
Let me just start over again. Ideally, yeah.
Yeah.
In med surg, yes, that's what's in the contract.
Yeah.
Right. So today at Harlem, for example, the ratio is 1 to 6 on all of our med surg units. For Queens, depending on if the patients, you know, have telemetry or not, it can range anywhere from 1 to 5 or 1 to 6. And for the step downs, would be 1 to 4.
Okay, that was the idea.
Okay, yes.
So when do you expect to get to safe patient-to-nurse ratios?
I think, I think nursing as a whole, as a profession, I think we need to get to the place where if there's a sick hall, the ratios do not adjust. If there's someone on leave, the ratios do not fluctuate. And I think that's something that we all need to work on together.
But you're working on it to get it soon, I'm assuming?
And that's why we're hiring so aggressively.
All right.
Yes.
All right. Some of my colleagues, you have any question that you want to ask? I can pass it on before I get to the next... You go to the next one? Helping Healers Heal program and the Hero program, both are intended to provide mental health for staff. How many people have participated in the program since the beginning of the pandemic? When does programming take place? How does it interact with the workday? Because we know some nurses, sometimes they cannot take a minute off.
So there's a 24/7 hotline that the nurses can call if they're, you know, if it's late at night and they're feeling anxious. But the Helping Healers Heal program is available during the day for debriefs on the units. The statistics and demographics, we would have to send that to you because it's been a very large amount of nurses and other providers and employees that have utilized Helping Healers Heal.
Oh, now I have to acknowledge my colleagues. Come in. I know you were here. Did I acknowledge you before? Yeah, it's just special. Good seeing you too. All right. At the end of 2018, sorry, we have to make it a little fun too. New York City launched the City Unwide Nurse Residency Program. How does the program function? What does a regular day of resident nurse look like? Who trains the resident nurses? How many people are involved in the training?
The Nurse Residency Program at New York City Health and Hospitals is a phenomenal program. Since its inception, we've had over 1,023 nurses in the program and have more than doubled the retention rate of our new nurses. The program, as it's designed, the 13th shift of the month, one of the shifts of the month, the nurses are released and ensured that they have protective times to attend this program. And we continued the program during the pandemic. The weekly, the monthly sessions, I would say, not weekly, are focused on really taking the nurses and helping them transition to practice and go from novice to expert. So there are facilitators that are nurse educators that come and go over IV insertion skills. They go over professional development. They go over interpersonal communication with physicians, medication administration, and other skills that the nurses need. The other special aspect, two things I would say about the nurse residency program is that we do a lot of anonymous polling with our nurse residents. How is it going at your facility? Are you being supported? And we review that with leadership. And I think that's really been telling. We most recently had our second nurse residency symposium, where the nurses conduct and report out amazing sessions on their evidence-based quality projects. Most recently, we had a group of nurse residents who won first place at the Magnet and Pathway to Excellence Conference. So we're very proud of this amazing program that has been supported by the city, that has been supported by Visient and Niasse in Greater New York. And so we're just extremely grateful of this program that's been allowed to really support over 1,000 nurses at New York City Health and Hospitals.
What happens at the end of one-year program? What are the requirements to apply for a registered nurse, for them to become?
They're automatically enrolled as a new nurse once they complete orientation. And at the end of the year, that is when they present their evidence-based project. There's a graduation that's absolutely phenomenal. We have guest speakers, and I present. And I also meet them at the beginning of the program. But at the end of the year, they're able to take that evidence-based project and submit it for the clinical ladder. And there's a financial incentive there because we want to recognize them for their hard work.
Incentives and benefits. What is resident nurse incentive to participate in the program? How much are the resident nurses paid? Are there any other incentives or perks to joining this program?
We've heard a lot of positive feedback about the program. There are three tiers that's designed in our particular program. And it ranges from anywhere from $1,500 to $3,000 at the end of the year that you can get once you complete your project. And I think the number one thing that we've heard is that it's given nurses a safe space to learn, which is priceless.
Nice. Are the mentor supervisors nurses giving extra compensation for training for resident nurses?
So we have mentors. So we have some retirees that come back to support our nurses. We know that retirees leave with a lot of institutional knowledge. We also have facilitators that are educators that really help to mentor and precept the nurses in the clinical setting as well. So there are multiple different individuals that come in to support the new nurses. CM, come in. Do you have any question?
Not now? Okay. You're going to wait for me? You have one?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I have just two questions. Thank you. So in your testimony, you highlighted a couple of programs that I think directly respond to what the previous speaker spoke about, which is mental health services, support for nurses. I'm curious, for under the H3 program, where do you think, where do you think we are falling short? What are some things that we can do as a council to support the work of this existing program? I just feel like some of the testimony today Um, I just feel like some of the testimony today maybe says the opposite. I mean, I think you were very enthusiastic. I think of what you were saying, the program sounds great on paper. Um, spaces for folks to, to decompress if they're feeling anxious, they could call a hotline. That was not the feeling that I got from the testimony, but, but can you explain kind of what we are, where we are failing to be able to improve this program, to expand this program? And in the instance where a nurse needs to call this hotline, how is she supported in that scenario where there is a staff shortage and she's being told she has to stay beyond her shift, but she desperately needs to call this hotline? She desperately needs to talk to somebody. What happens? Is she, is this nurse, and I'm sorry, I keep saying she, um, is the nurse? How is the nurse supported to prioritize their own mental health over the, the need to fill this shift because of the shortage?
I think we've done a lot of work. So I've, I've also been trained for H3. And, um, the training is very special. And the individuals who are part of Helping Healers Heal are also our employees from different levels, including ancillary staff, including nurses. And I think that anyone who's part of the program, and as I mentioned earlier, it's a robust program. Um, of course, we can always use additional support. And we would have to get back to you in terms of what we would need. In terms of supporting the nurses to call if they're short, I think because of the amount of honor that we all give to this program, that the managers know to allow the nurses to participate. As I mentioned, and, but let me just expand on this. The debriefs that happen, let's just say a patient dies on the unit. It can be a group debrief where there's pastoral care that comes on the unit to just help everyone who's crying, who's emotional at the time. But the anonymous aspect is what we saw the nurses use more during the pandemic, and they have access to it now. So once they get home, a nurse in the ED may not want to know that, anyone to know that they're vulnerable right now. And so of course escalation would occur if a nurse was not allowed to make that call. I think that everyone understands the importance of this program, and it's supported by Dr. Katz and I across the system and Dr. Eric Way. So this is a program we're very proud about. Um, they talked about it during the Pathway to Excellence recognition, the frontline staff, how much this program means to them, and the amount of work that we've done around well-being of our staff. If there's one thing that we're doing phenomenally, I think this is it at Health and Hospitals. I can't speak to other systems.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Um, when it comes to colleges, which one are participating in this program with you?
So in the nurse residency program?
Mm-hmm.
So in the nurse residency program, we don't necessarily have organizations come. Our educators are the ones that use the Visient platform to then create the content. But we are working very closely with CUNY. So we just created a CUNY and Health and Hospitals Academic Practice Partnership. And that is a special program where we're creating pipelines for CUNY nurses to come and work at Health and Hospitals, where we're working on health equity, and we're also working on leadership development within CUNY and also research. We just established the first research committee to ensure that we're contributing to our community around research. And so CUNY is helping us with all of those aspects, and we're very proud. And most recently, we had a press release where we just created a new nurse practitioner partnership with Hunter College as well. So a lot of amazing things happening with CUNY at Health and Hospitals.
If I may ask, who, who is, um, your target audience?
Everyone in terms of nursing. So we open our doors to associate degree nurses. We understand the social determinants of health related to income. And so we accept all nurses because we understand that we need to mentor our nurses to become what they want to be for their future.
Okay, what efforts are made to ensure that the program is accessible to minority and low-income students?
I think it starts with education. And that is why we ensure that we meet with the deans of the associate colleges, associate degree programs. It's so important that, you know, whether someone is able to afford education, that they're given the opportunity to have an amazing new job and to ensure that they have the benefits to continue their education. And that is what we're doing, to partner with all local colleges.
Good. I started my own initiative for those that go into nursing and mental health. Um, they will be able to get some extra money from the city. So anyone in associate degrees in seventy-five and up for GPA will be able to access that funding. So starting next year.
Thank you.
That's a start. Hopefully, we'll give more money out.
Yes.
Um, how has this program impacted the hospitals?
These programs have been phenomenal. Um, I think that we need to connect with all schools to ensure that, um, that we're able to sustain, to provide care to the uninsured here in New York City.
And first, I have to say, the initiative is not only Mercedes, is a team of folks. And I have to say that to my speaker that allowed me to push and push, making sure that we support the nurses. And you know I could not be here and not supporting nurses. Um, has this helped with the nurses shortage issue? Does that help? Is, you think that's gonna be helpful?
I think everything helps. I think we need everything. I think we need resources. I think we need to ensure that it's a healthy work environment. I think we need to recognize our nurses. We need to support them. We need to listen to them. And that is what we do at Health and Hospitals. We listen to our NICE partners. We listen to our frontline, and we work collaboratively. That is our goal.
Okay. Talking about initiative. In recent month, Kathy Hochul, the governor, has announced a series of initiatives that aim to retain the nurses and healthcare workers already working and to attract new people to the field. The state fiscal year 2023 budget will allocate an extra four billion for, um, raises and bonuses for healthcare workers, including a new scholarship program. Among the initiatives, the healthcare and the mental hygiene worker bonus program has already begun since early August. Qualified employer could receive five hundred dollars. So I'd do better than that. Five hundred dollars to three thousand, depending on the hours they work and their six-month vested periods. Application submission for the second vested, um, period will be April first, 2022, to October first, 2022. Closes today, November twenty, which is already, um, 2022. How many applications have been submitted on behalf of the H&amp;H nurses?
Five thousand nurses have been able to take advantage.
Good. How many more submissions have planned to be made, which you already closed? So we're not gonna go there. Has any nurses or other staff received their bonuses yet?
I believe so, but HR would have to confirm that.
You don't have the statistics?
No, we would have to get back to you on that.
Okay. Beside the healthcare and mental hygiene worker bonus program, does the city have an idea of much of the four billion? That we're gonna have to look for more allocated to H&amp;H and the city. So did you get any other funding?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not at all, okay. All right. Um, so the policy that you recommend? Any policy that you think? I'm putting you on the spot right now.
Oh, that's okay. I'm on the stand. I think that, um, I think personally, it starts with education. I think we have to do something about the amount of individuals that are turned away from nursing school because of the lack of faculty. And we also have to look at the pay of faculty. We need more nurses. It is multifactorial in terms of pay and retaining them once they're in our doors. But speaking for Health and Hospitals, I think we need more nurses that can afford to go to school. And we need more programs.
Is the administration thinking of creating new citywide programs for nurses with focus on higher and fair wages, hazard pay, better healthcare, equity-based incentives, better working conditions?
I think we're gonna assess all of that in our next contract. We're gonna assess a lot of different factors.
You remember how I started, that I have faith, and I'm very optimistic about this.
Yes.
And this is the city of New York. And I want to say thank you, Madame Sineas, Dr. Sineas, for being here. And any question for my colleagues or, um, Councilman Baron Moya? Any question? I guess not. Charles? I guess.
Push them to show, we're just gonna deal with that since we got it. But I'm, I'm a shoe.
What was that? I didn't hear you. We didn't hear you. The question, if you have any question, to send it to, um, to Jen or whatever. Jen will call you. You want Jen to call you? I guess not.
Okay.
Going once. I guess thank you so much for your time.
Thank you as well.
Thank you. And now I'm gonna pass it on. Um, now we're gonna call. You can go, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Um, thank you very much, Administration. You may go if you like. Um, we, we are calling New York, sorry, Greater New York Hospital Association for Testifying. You may begin whenever you're ready.
And thank you for being here and your patience. Sorry.
A little bit. And, um, thanking you for your optimistic, um, view and comments as the start of this hearing today. And I think that's essential for us to move forward. So I really, really appreciate that. Um, I also appreciated the comments that you made about increasing, um, the student pipeline to the healthcare professions and with a clear focus on equity to make sure that all populations have those opportunities. Um, scholarships as well, which we'll talk about in a little bit. And in general, just better pathways, um, to healthcare careers. Um, it's essential as we grow as a country, as a world, that we increase the pipeline, that we increase the caregiving. Um, and while, um, H&amp;H is still here, I just want to comment on, um, Natalia Sineas's, um, amazing work that she's done specifically with the nurse residency program and what the organization has done with its Helping Healers Heal program. They are really exemplars for others to emulate. Um, and the nurse residency program, by the way, is supported by the New York City Small Business Administration through the Health Careers, Health Alliance, Health Centers for Careers, Health Alliance for Careers in Healthcare. Sorry about that. And we have all twenty-six hospitals in New York City that are participating in that program at no cost. The preceptor cost is something borne by the hospitals, but the, um, the, the curriculum itself is supported by the city of New York. So we really appreciate that. And lastly, just because I want to cover things that you have raised today. Um, you asked several questions about data, and that, and that's really important. And it's important also to know that the Center for Health Workforce Studies, which works out of the University of Albany, um, has recently done, um, a scan around the state. I can't tell you what the compliance rate was, but they're really looking at all health professions. They're looking at the level of vacancies, if you will, and then the reasons for those vacancies, which is really important for us to understand in order to be able to move forward into a future where we don't suffer the same consequences of the shortages that we see today. So that, I think, covers, um, what I wanted to, to address, to make sure I didn't leave them out.
So you agree that health is wealth? And we can provide the best quality healthcare in New York City?
Absolutely. It's essential to our well-being as, as humans. We need to do that. And we know it to current generations as well as the generations to come.
Thank you.
I do want to acknowledge, and I hope that, um, this is received in the best spirit, that, but the magnitude of what hospitals and caregivers did during the COVID pandemic cannot be understated. It was nothing short of heroic. And the amassing and deployment of healthcare resources to New York City as a start, because we were this epicenter in 2020. Um, and then the lessons learned from New York City to the rest of the country has really been beneficial. And I will tell you, we were early learners. We learned from Seattle. We held one of the first, um, clinical conferences with staff from Seattle as they were seeing increasing critical care patients coming in with this unknown, you know, disease, if you will. And, um, it, it helped us. And then we in turn had the ability to share those learnings, um, with, with others across the country. But needless to say, we are in a healthcare crisis today in terms of caregiving. We do not have the resources. We went into the pandemic short-staffed, I would say, not everywhere, but in various sectors. And, um, the, the, the damage, if you will, because of the demand on healthcare providers that the pandemic actually wrought, has left us in a place where we're doing a lot of thinking. And I will say, we're very hopeful that the funds coming through the state in last state's budget, the Innovation Center, which is earmarked for resources, to really be thinking out of the box about the future. How do we prepare healthcare givers? And how do we ensure the vitality and the health of those healthcare workers? So, um, a, a lot to be done there, but there's recognition for sure. Uh, we were teetering, as I said, on, you know, being close to the edge with staffing. The pandemic pushed us over, which brought us to, um, healthcare agencies, if you will. Um, travel nurses is what they're commonly called. Um, and they came at no short expense. It was extremely expensive to cover those resources, but they were necessary at the time. I'm understanding from many of our hospital members, which are throughout New York State and all of New York City hospitals are members of Greater New York, that they are relying less and less, um, on agency staff and more and more on their own employed staff. And they've benefited greatly from the last two sort of periods of graduation, if you will, from nursing schools and colleges and universities and are increasing their recruitment. Um, it's not easy, but they are bringing new nurses on board. Uh, I can't speak to retention yet. We'll know more about that once the Center for Health Workforce Studies survey, um, data is released, which we hope it will be somewhat late December, but clearly before the next state budget, um, is due. So, um, there is, you know, we're sort of running on all cylinders on all that we can do to recruit and retain nurse residency programs. As I said, I, I think is, is essential to that retention. Along with, um, you know, the healthcare bonuses have done a lot in terms of the spirit with which those bonuses were given and received in acknowledgement of what the healthcare workforce has actually been through. The other, um, benefit, if you will, there were benefits to the crisis, were staffing flexibilities that came through executive orders from the governor, allowing out-of-state licensed providers to come into New York State, not only nurses, physicians, um, and, and various therapists. Uh, um, what do I want to say? Um, discipline-specific therapists that, that were much in need. Um, we've seen those executive orders extended, um, time and again, where that is still permissive, and we appreciate that. And we hope to see some of those flexibilities codified, um, in state law into the future. Um, allowing, you know, retirees to come back into the profession with just a sort of a brief, um, brush-up, if you will, but also bringing them in in areas where they felt comfortable. Not all retired nurses felt comfortable going to a bedside, but they felt more comfortable doing discharge teaching or managing, um, other types of non-acute care needs of their patients. Um, but again, I, it can't be understated either that the travel agency costs were prohibitive, and hospitals are still trying to sort of wean themselves, as I mentioned earlier. Um, talked about recruitment and retention. There are other funding opportunities. There's creation of the Nurses Across New York Program, where the loan repayment, um, is provided for RN to work in underserved areas. Um, and as I already mentioned, more to come on the Healthcare Innovation Center, Health Workforce Innovation Center, that we expect to be up and running sometime early next year. There are other areas that we've been exploring with nursing even pre-pandemic, which is expanding the scope of practice to allow nurses to function to their full extent of their license, whether that be as an LPN, an associate degree, or BSN graduate or beyond. Um, and allowing nurses to really function and, and to move, if you will, in an assessment phase without, um, being held up or held back with other necessary, um, steps in the process. So we're continuing to push things like non-patient-specific standing orders. We have a very successful prototype in the newborn care arena, and we'd like to see that extended to other clinical domains. Um, hiring new grads with limited permits. Um, sometimes the administrative process of licensure takes a while. Uh, we've brought this to the attention of the State Education Department, and they have begun to fast-track some of these pending licensees so that they can get, um, off and running and into practice. Um, in terms of the burnout, I think you've heard a lot of really innovative and helpful programming from, um, Health and Hospitals. Um, I already mentioned Helping Healers Heal. Greater New York has had a longstanding focus on workforce wellness, even pre-pandemic. We had, um, a division that was dedicated to bringing programming to our members, whether it was at a nursing level, a therapist's level, or a graduate medical education level. And where our practitioners across the state and across the country shared successes, shared best practices. There's a keen focus on the need to ensure the wellness of our workforce, whether it's mental and/or physical. Um, and those programs are underway. We continue to host many of those programs and, as I said, to bring best practices to, to light. Um, I want to just mention on the healthcare, the Hospital Clinical Staffing Committee law. This was a law that was signed into, um, into law, legislation signed into law in June of 2020. The law becomes effective in January of 2021. And it was an approach that was driven by best practices that we were seeing not only in our own academic medical centers, but across the country, of giving healthcare, the healthcare workforce a voice in the staffing plan, the unit-level staffing plans. Those plans have been developed. They've been submitted to the Department of Health. If the plans can't be met, hospitals are required to amend the plan and submit that update to the Department of Health. Um, the plans often provide a range of staffing per unit based on census and acuity. And again, give the decision-making for how to staff safely to those closest to the patients being served. So it's not a cookie-cutter approach. It's very specific to the resources you have, not only with nursing, but with other disciplines, respiratory therapy, physical therapy, nutrition support, all of the things and all of the components that go into ensuring that all the patients' needs are met. So we're very, um, hopeful. This is, um, it's, we're gonna have to sort of learn by trial and error, if you will, and hope that the spirit of camaraderie that came to bring these plans together continues into implementation of the plans. Um, and in conclusion, I just want to say that, you know, the keys to rebuilding our healthcare system are to further invest in New York's heroic healthcare workforce, to shore up chronically inadequate Medicaid rates, Medicaid reimbursement rates, and to struggle, I'm sorry, to support our struggling safety net hospitals. Um, additional funding has been earmarked, but more and more funding needs to be brought forward in order for these hospitals to thrive, um, into the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your time and thank you for being here. We appreciate you. Um, nurses' concerns. In recent survey by Chief, I mean, Chief Med, from five hundred nurses serving, two-thirds say they plan to leave. Right? To leave nursing in two years, which is an eighteen percent increase from last year. Among the top concern, ninety-nine percent cited staffing shortage. Forty-three percent said the course of leaving. And twenty-seven percent said being forced to work too many hours. So what is Greater New York doing to increase the retention rates among their nurses? What programs or incentive are in place to, we, I mean, retain nurses? Are they giving in, I mean, bonuses or hazard pay for working under challenging conditions while being understaffed? How many people received these benefits? Or took advantage of the initiatives that you have over there in your hospitals?
You know, our responsibility as a hospital association is to identify challenges that hospitals, hospitals face and then ensure that those challenges are being received and heard by those who have control over the purse strings, if you will. We don't have the funding to actually ensure that, um, some of these problems are addressed adequately and funded, you know, necessarily to the extent they need to be. But we do have an ability to advocate for our members, um, to hear the voice of our members who are speaking not only for their staff, but for the patients that they serve. And again, I will reflect back on the inadequacy of the Medicaid rates. Um, in New York State, sixty to sixty-five cents on the dollar is actually what's recouped for every dollar spent. Uh, the cost of supplies, pharmaceuticals, staff, equipment, um, is, is also risen with inflation, and those costs are borne by the hospitals. So we're looking at shoring up our most needy institutions, our safety net facilities, but also ensuring that our academic medical centers, who see the largest proportion of Medicaid patients in the state, are also appropriately compensated by adequate Medicaid rates.
So another word. The hospital that you represent, they mostly serving Medicaid patient?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
The hospitals that you represent are mostly serving Medicaid?
No, 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 no. They are serving all populations in New York City. We represent all of the city, well, all of the patients, if you will, and all the hospitals that serve those patients. But in order to get a safety net institution more level with other institutions that where safety nets don't have the amount of, um, commercial insurance that supports reimbursing for that patient's level of care, they're relying on a Medicaid program that is currently underfunded.
How much of your budget is reserved for increasing nurses' wages?
Again, we are a hospital association.
Mm-hmm.
We don't pay nurses.
No, I'm talking about the hospital you represent.
I can't tell you what that number looks like.
So you don't have the statistic or data, data from the hospital that, under your leadership?
We have a hundred and fifty hospitals who are members. Um, we do, um, provide. We do provide, you know, resources to them in terms of data analytics. I'm sure that, I shouldn't say I'm sure, that's available information, but it's not something I can speak to today.
So therefore, the question that I want to ask, since you kind of like don't know the statistic of the, or data of those hospitals, because right now, what the whole idea is trying to understand, how we gonna, what we gonna do? Like I said, I'm very optimistic to see how we can solve the problem that we have in front of us today. We have NISA, we have H&amp;H that can give me this report, but now, talking to Greater New York that have, representing a lot of hospitals, so how can we actually address the problem that's facing me? Because all the questions that I ask, if I have to ask you all those questions, what question, you've been in the room, what are the sum of the questions you think that you can answer? Because right now, we need to know what we're gonna do in term of staffing in the hospital, and how we gonna make our nurses not a zero, but a heroes the way they're supposed to be. That's the problem I'm facing right now. And whatever the question that I ask, so I'm gonna have to run through my questions and see which one that you can actually answer for the hospital that, under your leadership.
I mean, I think I can give you a generalizable answer, but I can't give you dollar figures on what every hospital spends on its nursing budget. I know the nursing budget is a huge component of any hospital's healthcare budget, probably one of the biggest components, because it's the profession that is the highest volume of employees in a hospital, are their nurses. Our CEOs take nurses' issues, concerns, needs very, very seriously. I don't think they want to do anything but ensure that they have not only the right supply of nurses, the right type of nurses, but that their nurses are well taken care of with regard to benefits and salary, et cetera.
So how about I ask you some?
Priority is all I can say. I can't, you know, put a number to it. I'm sorry.
Even if I ask you about the tracker or what they do, can you have, do you have any data right now? You can say this hospital doing that, that hospital is doing this, then we can get somewhere to where, what we doing in each hospital? I don't want to be kind of like asking you question that, all the question that you cannot answer me. I want to work with you right now, because I'm trying to get a solution to the problem that we facing, having the testimony from them, from NISA, testimony, I mean, H&amp;H answered most of my questions, I would say, a good amount, the way that I'm expecting. But now, how do we do that? What can, we work together on the, what kind of question that I can get answered from? I'm not being a wise guy. I'm just trying, so we don't spend a lot of time going around and making you feel like you don't have no data for me.
Well, I don't have data to provide you such as that which you've raised in your questions. I think the areas that I covered in my remarks are the areas that we are most familiar with, because we work with our hospitals on all of those issues. We work with our hospitals on developing staffing plans and responding to all of the attendant laws that they are required to comply with. So short of, you know, I can't get into numbers in terms of, you know, or percentages, but those data, you know, hospitals, those data exist. They're nonprofit hospitals. They are, you know, publicly available to a certain extent. I don't know if every question you're seeking an answer to is available.
Like the ratios for the nurses in ICU of the hospital that you represent? What's the ratio of nurses to patient in ICU?
Two to one, based on acuity, and it can be one to one if it's more serious. It's not based on being in an ICU. It's based on the acuity level of the patient's needs.
Got you. So it's based on the patient in the ICU? What's the level of accuracy they have? Like if they're very acute, renal failure, all this thing, cardiac, then you determine if it's one to one? Okay, fair enough. Med surg?
There's a range. I think you're hearing about a range. I think we heard about one to five, one to six is a goal. And there's always the goal, and then there's sometimes the reality that interferes with the goal. And I think you, as a practicing nurse, understand those realities. Hospitals are, you know, held to understanding foreseeable variations on a plan, meaning they should understand whether it's winter weather conditions, or, you know, a declared disaster would take the plan probably offline, but, you know, some sort of, you know, local type of issue that has kept staff from getting to work, hurricanes, weather, things like that. But there are plans, and hospitals try to be, you know, vigilant and meet every element of those plans. And many of them have ranges, you know, because again, the acuity on even a med surg unit can vary. You can have three patients waiting to go home, but no one has come up to pick, you know, come in to pick them up, which could increase potentially for that assignment, the number of patients, but the needs of those patients are much less than your typical med surg patients. So it's sort of the practical reality of what does the patient need and how can we best serve that need?
Yeah. But that's the reason we have the law that we have to have the basic, because there is, we have to be practical. I got it. Because there is sometimes that the nurses don't show up to work. You have to use the staff. I understand all that, but like the minimum that we gain, like this is the ratio, but in kind of emergency, this is what happened. I can get that one. You know, I'm a very practical person. So, the nurses that you hired, I mean, from under the umbrella, how many of them are experienced nurses?
Well, new graduates or not experienced nurses yet, and I would say they are the largest pool of nursing resources for our hospitals. So I can't give you, you know, new graduates can also range in age. It's not everyone that goes linear from high school to, into a nursing program. So new graduates, I think, are the largest bulk of hirees right now for all of our hospitals.
I'm gonna pass it to my colleagues right now, and then I'll come back. So who wants to go first? Sandy Nurse?
Sandy Nurse, not a nurse, yes. Hi. I'm trying to make it fun. I just have some questions around, because you didn't have like super dialed-in data per hospital, I guess I want to understand more about the general environment of the hospitals here. So in terms of the ability to recruit, retain, have enough capacity, seems like it's a financial issue is what is being said. But I'd like to get into more about executive pay. You did mention it a little bit. I didn't see it in the written testimony, so I didn't, it was, I didn't retain anything. I'm sorry. But just to kind of look at the lay of the land. The executive pay bonuses and perks in 2020 for some of our great hospitals here. The CEO of New York Presbyterian Hospital, about just under $12 million total package. The VP COO of Presbyterian, about just over $7 million. Couple other hospitals, $7 million, $5 million. That's just the pay. So then, as Pat wasn't here from NISA, but also testified, Presbyterian is making about $1 billion in profits. $19 billion in assets. Mount Sinai, $185 million in profit, $6 billion in assets. Northwell's, $177 million in profits, $460 in investment income, $19 billion in assets. So what would happen if a hospital like Presbyterian made, a CEO made, or for profit? If Presbyterian said, "We're gonna make $700 million, excuse me, in profit instead of $1 billion." What, what would that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to throw it. What would that do? I mean, why is it necessary for them to make $1 billion in profit? What would be $300 million taken off the top of that? What would that do to increase pay, staffing capacity, meet the demands that all of these nurses have repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly been saying for years are required? I'm just curious, because I don't know anything really about hospitals.
Well, I can tell you that there's one CEO in a hospital, and then there's hundreds and thousands of employees. So I think you can't compare a CEO's salary to a nurse's salary, per se. I will also say, New York is a very competitive.
No, okay, so I'm asking.
Well, I'm trying to answer.
I'm asking, why? You represent an association, a network, so why does a CEO need to make $12 million but a nurse, whatever they're making per hour?
Hospital CEO compensation reflects the level of competition that the region bears. It reflects the need for skills and leadership necessary to operate large, very complex organizations that are open 24/7, and that are often the largest employer in a community. So there, I'm just giving you, you know, background on understanding the context of your question. I can't answer your question specifically, but they are also the largest providers of healthcare to the underinsured and uninsured, as well as Medicaid patients. And they need to focus on the core mission of patient care and safe patient care delivery, if you will. There's a lot of financial expertise that goes into it, regulatory, public policy. I think you know that.
I understand, but we're talking about profit, which is like the cream on top. After everything else has been covered, right? Your operating costs have been covered. You've paid for things. This is the top. So if you, if Presbyterian, as an example, I'm just picking on them, said, "We're gonna pay $7 million instead of $12 million to our CEO for everything, packages, the bonus package, the perks, executive pay," how hard would it be? Would it be impossible for Presbyterian to recruit a competent, capable, caring CEO?
I can't answer that question.
You can't answer that. I mean, because you've got someone else who's doing it at $5 million.
I think you're missing in your question, where do those quote-unquote, it's really excess after costs as opposed to profits? Where do they go? They go back into the workforce. They go into pharmaceutical costs, inventory costs of all, every nature in a hospital.
So you're saying profit is nonprofit in this case? You're saying profit is reinvested?
These are nonprofit hospitals.
Right, I understand that. So then, why are, what I'm saying is, if you're able to bring down the cost of your executive, because your workforce that's doing the business of the hospital is not able to stay in their jobs because they're paid terrible wages, we're saying, what would happen if you brought it down a little bit? Can't you still recruit and retain top-level executive leadership to cut a little bit off the top and reinvest it into your workforce, as you're saying?
I answered that question.
I'm just asking. I don't know anything about hospitals.
It's okay.
I've just got health insurance for like the first time in 10 years, so I'm, I don't know much about hospitals, but it seems like there would be enough in the pot to bring it down.
I've answered that question. If you'd like me to explain a little bit more of where the excess over expenses goes, it goes back into the hospital. Hospitals actually lose money treating every Medicaid and underinsured patient, and even Medicare patients are not paying dollar for dollar. It costs a lot of money to run hospitals, as you know that.
Right, I understand. But it's a choice. It is a choice made by people who decide the operations, the staffing, pay scales. It's a choice of that hospital to say, "I'm gonna pay $12 million versus $5, or $12 versus $11, and I'm gonna use some of that and reinvest it in my workforce." That's a choice being made. And I'm saying, you answered, I'm saying I disagree with you, and I think that that could come down and solve some of our staffing needs that have been clearly articulated. I guess, you know, there's, what they're saying, 170,000 registered nurses are licensed and not employed in New York. Why don't you think they want to work for your facilities?
Why do I think they should want to work?
Why don't you think nurses want to work at your facilities, and what do you think could be done to change that?
I think many nurses want to work at our facilities. They want to practice their profession. Many nurses feel, they must feel that they are being adequately reimbursed for their services.
Right. So it's still about pay scale?
You know, I think you're trying to oversimplify.
I'm not oversimplifying.
Okay.
Because people are saying, "I'm not getting paid enough, and I'm incurring all of this incredible burden of our entire city in taking care of people. I'm not being adequately compensated for all the things that I'm doing. I'm not getting a cup of coffee, even just a time for a cup of coffee. I'm working my ass off, and I'm not able to take care of myself."
Watch the language, please.
I'm sorry. And so if there's 170,000 registered nurses who want to do this job, who care about this work, and they're saying, "It's not, I'm making a choice. Should I go here? It's not, I'm not getting paid enough." And I'm asking, why, why don't they want to work at your facilities? What can be done to change that? I just, I just, I'm curious. Okay, I'll keep it moving. Last question. Will you commit to increasing resources to hire and retain nurses, including guaranteeing safe staffing ratios, maintaining quality healthcare for nurses, and improving pay?
I missed the first part of your question.
Will you commit?
Will I commit?
Or maybe your association could consider. Increasing resources to hire and retain nurses, including by guaranteeing safe staffing ratios, maintaining quality healthcare for nurses, and improving pay?
Yes, of course, we would.
Thank you. Sorry, Chair, for the profanity. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
One other thing, you just mentioned about 170,000 nurses that are licensed, right? And not employed. But don't you have a vacancy?
Where does that figure come from?
You don't know where the number from?
I don't know where that. I'm not sure what was being quoted before.
Okay. So if, if in case, you have vacancy? So I'm wondering if you have vacancy, so there's nurses that want to work. For, I don't know how that happened, but there is numbers of nurses out there that willing to work. Not your problem, but I'm just putting it out there, because that's, let me see where the source came from.
Where is that from?
Okay. CM, wait a second. Yeah, so I'm just saying that. So I can, we can provide you the number.
That would be good. Okay.
I'm gonna pass it on to CM Kabun.
Thank you very much, Chair. I appreciate it. Before I get into my questions, I just, there's something that you said that stuck out to me during my colleague's questioning, and you gave this answer, you testified how CEO salaries reflect, and you ticked off a bunch of different things that amounted to some sort of like attestation about exceptionalism. And I take issue with that. I think that the CEO salaries reflect greedy capitalism and the exploitation of workers to maximize profits for a small few, but, you know, I think that Elon Musk is proof that CEOs, in a lot of ways, aren't special, and are resource hoarding when we should be adequately paying the workers who make the thing function, and that is our nurses. But moving on from that, I just, like wholly blown away by that premise, to be honest. But I want to move into some questions around, you know, specifically, well, I'll start with upcharging. Many of us saw in an article that was posted on Monday that a new report showed that New York City could be losing $2 billion a year on hospital costs, because private hospitals are charging three to four times the Medicare reimbursement rate for some services. And 32BJ went so far as to remove New York Presbyterian from its network at the beginning of 2022 because of concerns about inflated costs. And so now we're hearing that these same hospitals are refusing to increase contributions to the NISA benefit fund after raising their own fees. So how can hospitals increase fees it charges to a benefit fund, but refuse to also increase benefit contributions to cover those costs when nurses need care?
I mentioned a few minutes ago, I think, in an earlier topic, that there are a lot of factors that contribute to costs in hospitals. Rising drug and medical device costs, New York's medical malpractice environment, which is exceptionally high relative to other parts of the country, inflation, a complicated regulatory structure, higher labor costs, and underinvestment in the social determinants. and underinvestment in the social determinants. Biggest culprit, massive insurer profits to the tune of billions, which are taken out of the state where many of these corporations are actually licensed. So I, I'm not sure that's going to be a satisfactory response to you, but I think all of the costs that go into delivering healthcare from a small safety net hospital to a large academic medical center need to be considered.
David, you're right, it's, it's not all that satisfactory, but I'll move on. So, and this was touched on, on earlier, but I want to dig a little bit deeper. We all know this as a truth, right? Nurses have been on the front lines of, of the pandemic. We all know that nurses are now suffering and dealing with the effects of long COVID or PTSD from their work during the pandemic, and the pandemic continues. But hospital trustees to the NAISNA benefit fund have shared a list of 35 cuts that they're looking to make.
I can't, I'm sorry, I missed what you said. I didn't get the last thing that you just said.
Sorry, my thing just died. I'll move it closer. So again, talking about some of the effects that our, our nurses are dealing with from long COVID to PTSD because of the work that they have been doing. But hospital trustees to the NAISNA benefit fund have shared a list of 35 cuts they're looking to make to nurse healthcare benefits. And so a, a question I pose to you is how, how do you possibly consider cutting healthcare for COVID nurse heroes, for frontline COVID nurses? And won't those cuts hurt your ability to hire and retain staff?
I am not privy to all of the negotiations with the benefit fund. I know they're ongoing right now. And I'm, there's nothing more I can say about that than that is right now between the hospitals and their constituents.
Do you think it's appropriate or to, to consider cutting healthcare for nurses?
I don't think my opinion is something that is meaningful to this conversation as a person. As an organization, we absolutely support healthcare workers being paid appropriately to have benefits if they're part of an organized labor union that are adequate, more than adequate, and in many cases they are. And again, getting back to a wage that is fair based on commensurate performance, capacity to perform whatever their, you know, their, their profession is. So of course we support all of that. It should not be, you know, you should not be left with the concept that we do not believe in the healthcare workforce. None of us exist without that.
I mean, the living conditions of everyday working-class nurses are, are the thing that supports the premise that they are not valued, that this workforce is not being valued.
This workforce is valued.
Right, just, yeah, exactly. Right. I mean, I think, you know, again, doing, doing the kind of work that is being done, the life-saving work, value has to extend beyond empty testimony that the workforce is valued, but has to materially affect their living conditions every single day. Okay. You have a question?
I'm a little taken back by, you're, you're the senior vice president of this association, correct?
One senior vice president, yes.
I'm taken back how you got there without, with your, your personal values not being reflective in this very important role. So for your response to say, I don't think my opinion matters, I think, I think that's the wrong response to have. I mean, we have a responsibility, and I think if I ever approach any person and say, well, my personal opinion is not, does not matter here.
I'm here to represent my organization.
As one of the senior vice presidents.
That we serve.
As one of the senior vice presidents. So I think there's a major responsibility. You're the only one here to testify, so I think that's super concerning for you to, for you to say that. But I, I didn't put you in that position, so that's for your association to take up with you. My question is related to racial equity. The reason that so many of us here are so passionate about supporting this workforce is because if you look at the room, they are women of color, they are immigrant women, they are black and brown. And in like any profession that is composed of mostly women of color, there, nobody cares. And so saying that their work is valued is an insult when their work is valued in every way, except their income, except salary, except in the way that they need to continue to do this work. So my question is about kind of what we saw during the pandemic in the institutions, what are called safety net hospitals, but any hospitals that were taking in patients. What is the plan in your, in your position as senior vice president? But like, what can you share from, from the association? As far as what is the plan to support equity and measures for equitable service and equitable pay for these hospitals and for the nurses in these hospitals? So that they can continue to serve the folks that look like us? So they can continue to serve the people that need it most in, in these communities?
Equity and every aspect of what equity means in a person's life, as a caregiver, as a patient, as a hospital association professional, is, is very much top of mind. It's very much part of the everyday goals of our organizations. And now it's been codified in many different requirements to ensure that nothing is missed. Whether it's federal CMS requirements, accreditation organization requirements. And New York State in and of itself, with regard to many different aspects of healthcare delivery, is, is laser-focused on equity, as are our hospitals. And they are emerging as leaders and sharing the wealth, if you will, of what they're learning, of how to ensure an equitable experience in the healthcare system for all patients that they serve.
But what are some of those examples? What's going to keep a constituent, a, a black constituent of mine from going to, from feeling that they have to go to an affluent hospital in an affluent neighborhood because they had a, they just didn't have the care that they deserved at a neighborhood hospital?
We're really beginning to learn and to look at how ethnicity, race, underlying family history, if you will, how all of that manifests itself into the disease processes that are treated in our hospitals, whether it's in an ambulatory care center or in an acute care medical center. And to identify what are the supports that we have to give that patient to ensure that they have an equitable experience of the healthcare system? It's not about equality, it's about equity. Because not everybody has the same personal wherewithal, if you will, to even receive healthcare services in the same manner. Is it a matter of transportation that they can't get to the appointment? What do we do to address that need? Is it a matter of not picking up pharmaceuticals? It could be transportation, it could be cost. It could be lack of understanding, it could be language. It could be interpretation or lack thereof, skills that are either afforded to that individual or that they are not getting on their own. It's looking at where they live and how they live. Do they have stairs? Have they had an orthopedic procedure? Is someone understanding of what the home looks like before that patient is sent home? So there's every aspect of life has an equity, opportunity focus, if you will. And as a healthcare system of providers, we are deeply engrossed in this. And, and will succeed because our patients need to succeed. It's not about the hospital's success as much as the patient's success.
So my last question, so I, I don't think that quality and equity are interchangeable. I think they live in the same home. So I think that that's really important. And I don't know if I misheard what you said, where you said it is about quality.
Equality. Quality and equity absolutely go hand in hand.
It is about equity and quality. And what are some of the steps that we can expect as far as what your findings are, are demonstrating as far as racial equity? What are some of the steps that you are, the, the association is taking to support your membership, to support the nurses that are serving these communities, that are serving these hospitals? In many instances, these nurses are also of color. And I think a lot of what was raised today, kind of where equity lives within even their own profession, what are some of the steps you're taking to achieve that even amongst your membership? To better serve the communities and to, to do exactly what you just said you're hoping to achieve?
One very simple step, I think that we've all really understand now how meaningful it is, is the voice of the patient. What is the patient telling us? Or what is the patient not able to tell us as we assess what their needs may be? Again, through the course of chronic illness, acute care hospitalization, or just long-term disability that they need to live with and that their family needs to live with? And what are the supports that need to be provided? But I don't know that we've been as good at listening to patients as, as we are becoming. And that's at all stages of the healthcare sector, whether it's a surgeon in the operating room to understand someone's pain threshold or lack thereof. Or, or someone that's in an ambulatory care center, a federally qualified health center, that, you know, just can't afford those monthly prescription bills. How do we get them those, those medications to ensure that they have an equitable chance of living with a disease that someone with better means can, because they can access those medications? If those examples, hopefully they're meaningful. But it's, it's at all stages of healthcare, it's all stages of life, honestly.
Thank you. Those questions happen to be very important because we want to get to the bottom of it. Like I always said, I'm very optimistic. So I feel like something that I have to be done in the city of New York to provide the best quality of healthcare throughout our city. Like one of my colleagues mentioned, is a lot of black, brown women that being nurses in those hospitals. And we're very much interested in what's going on. Because if we have to address the inequities, we have to start by making sure that people, especially when it comes to healthcare, to make sure that we, health is wealthy and we have to address it. And when we're looking at the pay and the bonuses, of course, people, it's a public knowledge, people are going to ask questions. And I pray that whoever in charge, whoever leading each hospital, have to pay attention. Because this question right now is how do we address the inequities in our city? In 2020, yeah, I know you're clapping because that's very important. And it's not only for the level of hospital, but throughout this, every level. And in 2020, New York hospitals received hundreds of million of dollars in federal relief fund, the CARE Act. Can you give us an accounting of how much, if any, CARES Act money was used to improve staffing? Did your facilities in New York City implement and/or even higher freeze in 2020 and 2021? If so, explain why.
Again, I cannot give you specifics, but I can tell you in general, the CARE Act funding was deployed, if you will, within organizations absolutely in staffing, as well as many other aspects of care delivery, like all the things I mentioned earlier, pharmaceuticals, equipment, materials, and, and just staffing across the board.
By the way, I'm not being naive. I ran businesses in New York. I ran a medical and surgical supplies back in the days. So I know it's very costly to run hospital. I'm not only here just as a nurse, but I have been on the business side. And I know it can be costly. But all we ask, if there's so much money going in, it has to be, you know, balance out. We have to address the folks that are serving the hospital. And that's how we address inequities in the city. And if any time, we should do it now. We cannot look backward before the pandemic. Because before the pandemic did not work for black and brown people in the city of New York. So, New York Presbyterian Hospital, that's facts, federal relief fund. New York Presbyterian Hospital got That's money. That's big-time money we're talking about. So, I'm not going to go on, we can share all this because I don't want to get to bring the razzle in the room. So we kind of, because this is a lot of million we're talking about here, right? So, it's a lot. And the CEOs getting a lot. We're going to have to level the playing field a little bit. So I really appreciate you to be getting all the questions while, you, like you said, it's only you and all those big hospitals is involved. But I'm sure you're going to have that conversation because you play a key role. And I love dealing with women in charge. Because when you get the message, I'm sure you're going to relate it very well. We multitask well. We, we able to multitask and, and give messages well. So, um, talking about policy recommendations. What are your recommendations for how we address this shortage in working conditions that we're talking about? That's your recommendation?
I think, yeah, I think I mentioned several along the way. Just starting at the regulatory schema level, we are a highly regulated state. And I think we need to sort of loosen the chains on licensed professionals who are skilled in their profession to give them more access to practice their profession. We talked about out-of-state licensees being able to practice in New York. We do not, New York State is not part of the Nurse License Your Compact that allows other licensed nurses to come into the state more easily. We did that during the pandemic because it was essential. Similarly, we are, we can look at the same type of compact for physicians across borders. So, you know, being able to access providers in other regions that may not have the same demand on their skill set would be, would be very helpful. We have a lot of requirements around the educational system. Much of it sits within the professions, state education, law. And we do think that we could also loosen the reins, if you will, there to allow practitioners to practice to the full scope of their license and competence based on their privileges that are conferred by their hospital as they see fit. But we do think we could do a little bit better there and, and be slightly, slightly less encumbered, if you will. I think we need to look at the data that comes out of the recent survey that's being, that was undertaken that I mentioned. And I also think we need to, look to plan for the future. We need to increase our educational capacity, starting in high school. We heard that from several of us today. It's never too early to bring healthcare to the forefront of the minds of, you know, teenagers to give them a better sense of where they may go next. Community colleges have excellent, you know, preparedness programs to earn a BSN or a BS in other health, other health professions. And to reach communities that may not have access to those models of, of professions, professionals. So to expose them as much as possible. There's, um, one of our long-term care providers is a big believer in that, in going into high schools and teaching students what it means to be a healthcare provider, even at the most basic level, and bringing them into the long-term care community to understand what it's like to age, what it's like to look at, you know, a relative who is in need of that kind of attention. So we have to do more to build the pipeline. That goes without question, and that's essential because it's been raised many times about the scope of the problem in terms of vacancies. And we can only fill that with really adding in, in a multitude of factors to creating the workforce of the future.
By any chance, any of those recommendations, especially going to high school, trying to recruit those young folks, has been implemented in one of the facilities that you recommend?
Yeah, there is one facility that is doing it right now. And I can tell you offline, if you want to spend, if you want more of an understanding of that particular model.
You never even think about, but maybe a commercial ad on TV or something? Because you got money, guys.
Yeah, that's, that's, those are great ideas.
Yeah.
You know, public service announcements and reaching people where they're at, which is in their phones.
Yes. That's the best way.
Is really important. I totally agree with that. There are other, you know, loan forgiveness programs. I mentioned the nurses across America, there's also physicians across, or nurses across New York, I should say, that emulates a physician, similar program for physicians. And there are other pockets of tuition reimbursement. You know, the CUNY, the City University of New York is looking for, to apply for funding from the Department of Labor to do major work around creating, increasing the pool of educators and preceptors. It's not just about the students, but who's going to educate these students? And once those students have their degrees, who's going to precept them in a clinical setting to ensure that their competencies are what they should be and what they're comfortable with? We mentioned nurse residency programs. We'd love to see more funding for that across the state. We have it in New York City. I don't know how much longer we're going to have it, but we have it for another couple of years. Those programs are very successful in helping retain and recruit, as I mentioned. A little hard with COVID to look at the data because it's not great because we started these programs in 2018 and they were moving all in the right direction in terms of recruitment and retention. But we do think that they had a major impact in supporting those new nurses during COVID. And that is essential. And those are the folks that are still around. They were retained because they did get that, you know, sort of human-to-human contact and support and emotional support, a sense of well-being, even in the throes of chaos and, and crisis.
Thank you. Now, we know the PIDS units and the Children Hospital are, I mean, are currently packed with ISV cases and healthcare workers. And public health experts say they- And public health experts say there is a looming threat of tri-podemic of ISV, flu and COVID. What are you doing to increase, I mean, not you actually, your hospital is doing? Are they working on that?
Yeah, we are very involved with this and with the State Department of Health as well. There are data being collected on a daily basis about pediatric capacity and it has been broken down, separating RSV out from other illnesses, but we know by, we touch base with our transfer centers once a week. They are now functioning safely. They don't feel that they, you know, there's still a lot of capacity in the system, but it's really hard to tell until we get through at least a week after the holiday, the Thanksgiving holiday, when, you know, a lot of folks are not going to the doctor necessarily right away. And there's always a little bit of an after effect. But we have a meeting tomorrow with the transfer centers. But in New York City, they've been able to keep up. The pediatric hospitals are expanding their capacity. They're moving, you know, older adolescents, 17, 18-year-olds to adult floors if they need to, you know, continued hospitalization to make room for what are much younger children than we've ever seen with RSV. You know, we're talking six months old, which is very, very unusual. But some of it seemingly is explained by, you know, the sisters and brothers that are in preschool and bringing home something that these infants are not yet, have not yet developed immunities for. So we're also seeing very short lengths of stay with RSV. Within a day or two, these infants are being discharged and, and the older pediatric population, less than five, which is a good thing. It really just takes some medication and some aerosolized therapeutics to open up their airways and they're able to go home. But we are very much on top of this and the academic medical centers have been really the hardest hit because that's where the sickest kids are brought. We don't have as many pediatric beds as one might think. Every hospital does not have a pediatric unit anymore, but there are centers of excellence that have been able to absorb these cases safely. So far, we've been, you know, it's been very stable, I'm happy to say.
So there's no, no need for increasing staffing because we don't want to get like COVID timing, like if you want to increase?
Well, I mean, I think staffing is a separate, you know.
Are you, no, I mean, to prepare because we don't want people, the shortage we had last time in COVID.
Right, right, right.
Anything that we have to, to be alert, we have to learn from what took place with that height of the pandemic.
Right.
Yeah. So I'm gonna say thank you for your time. I appreciate your time and I'm very optimistic, so let's do this.
Again, here, pleased to hear you close with optimism and I thank you very much for the opportunity to appear before you.
Thank you.
And your counsel today.
Thank you so much. Turn over to the council.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much, Vice President Ryan. We will now hear from the public. I would like to remind everyone that I will call up individuals in panels and all testimonies will be limited to two minutes. So, thank you. So, oh yeah, sorry. Please wait for the sergeant at arms to announce that you may begin. And before that, I will call on our first panel. That is Julia Quantz, Craig Burke, Ari Moma, and Lorena Vivas. Apologies if I mispronounced anyone's name. We can begin with Ms. Julia Quantz. Please wait till the sergeants announce that you may begin.
Are we on? Okay, great. All right. Good afternoon. Thank you for scheduling this hearing so that my colleagues and I can share our experiences with you. I appreciate your concern for the sustainability of healthcare in our wonderful city. And I know you know that nurses are the heartbeat of healthcare delivery. And let me tell you, we're in a pickle. My name is Julia Quantz. I'm an open-heart surgery operating room nurse at New York Presbyterian Hospital at Columbia in Councilmember Carmen De La Rosa's district. I have been a nurse for 15 years and I love what I do. Following the dark, terrible, gruesome overnight shifts I worked during COVID in a pop-up intensive care unit built into my operating rooms, I was diagnosed with a serious degenerative condition, which is heavily influenced by heat, fatigue, and stress. Guess what's common in my job? Heat, fatigue, and stress, of course. Trouble is, this heat, fatigue, and stress provides me and my family healthcare. So in order to have medical oversight for my condition, I have to risk aggravating it every day. I rely on my employer to fulfill its duty to me the same way I care for my patients. Since before, but especially since the pandemic began, I've watched my nursing colleagues leave in droves. The consequences of being perpetually short-staffed and under-resourced have taken a deep toll on us. Such conditions are shameful. One of my colleagues committed suicide by jumping off the top floor of our parking garage three weeks ago and the hospital has yet to acknowledge the incident. Is it any wonder why we can't take it anymore? We're broken, we're drained, and we're limping ahead one dreary day at a time. In this context, my employer has the audacity to attempt to slash my healthcare benefits and more. It's as if they've chewed me up and spit me out and my broken body is worthless to them now because I'm too expensive to maintain. I want to care for my patients and I want to care for myself, but I need affordable healthcare first. I look at my hospital executives who endorse these cuts and find they collected bonuses on top of salaries so excessive they've shocked even the jaded business publications. The cart isn't just ahead of the horse. It's getting paid $10.7 million to tell the horse it should get by with one leg. In order to do well by New Yorkers, nurses and healthcare workers need justice. Please make it possible for us to keep caring for our patients the way you would want us to do, which is also what we want to do. Please give us workplaces that keep us healthy instead of treating us as disposable.
Craig Burke?
Good afternoon. Thank you for holding this hearing today and taking the time to listen to the experience of nurses. My name is Craig Burke. I've been a registered nurse for 12 years and currently work in the emergency room at Flushing Hospital. I would classify our current situation as a healthcare crisis. Because of the short staffing and unsafe working conditions, nurses are fed up and exhausted. Many nurses have made the decision to work for a travel nursing agency in search of higher pay and easier working conditions with less responsibility. Hospitals have pushed nurses beyond our limit and we need radical change. They have created a staffing crisis by failing to hire and retain enough staff nurses, leaving the rest of us to work our shifts, short-staffed. Hospitals haven't done enough to keep nurses at the bedside. Now, instead of rewarding us for our hard work during the pandemic, they're fighting against us. Our patients are suffering because of short staffing, too. In the emergency department, each nurse should be assigned at most six patients. There are times when nurses are charged with caring for more than 15. This is unacceptable. As a result of deficits in staffing, nurses do not call out and work overtime. Nurses end up working a 16-hour shift, which can become exhausting for the nurses and unsafe for the patients. Flushing Hospital used to hold its commitment and service to the community in the highest regard. Unfortunately, this commitment has been lost, but we want to help recommit itself to the community. We need the safe staffing and to do just that. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight what must be changed to provide New York City with care it deserves.
Thank you. Ari Moma?
Good afternoon. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to express how we feel when we walk into the hospital. My name is Ari Moma. I'm a psych nurse at Interfaith Medical Center, which is a branch of One Brooklyn Health. Every day, I feel the strain of our working condition. At our current staffing level, it seems impossible to deliver the care that every patient deserves. I am worried about how bad it could get this winter. I used to work as a nurse at New York Presbyterian Methodist Hospital before hospitals used COVID-19 as an excuse to close down the inpatient mental health units. From the beginning of, for, from the big academic medical centers to the safe net hospitals, New York City cannot afford to ignore the nurse staffing crisis any longer. New York City hospitals haven't just been ignoring the crisis, they've been creating it. Hospitals has been making excuses to maximize their profits. After the height of the pandemic, for example, New York Presbyterian froze hiring. Nurses left in droves and were never replaced. Instead of creating retention incentives for nurses, NYPD executives paid themselves millions of dollars. As the pandemic raged in 2020, NYPD received federal CARES Act money and turned around and paid ECO nearly $12 million in salary, bonus, and perks. They closed down the least profitable healthcare services like mental health that our community deserved desperately because they put their profit over the health and safety of their nurses, patients, and communities. It's outrageous. Too many nurses got sick on the job. Now, hospital trustees of nice, nice benefit fund are jacking up fees for healthcare services and looking to pass the cost onto their nurses and cut our benefits. Nurses are demanding better for our patient ourselves. The future of quality care is at stake. New York, New York City nurses are united, are fighting for their fair contracts. We thank our allies in the New York City Council for their solidarity, for understanding that our fight is your fight and that our working condition are your patient's care conditions. We are ready to do whatever it takes to win respect for nurses and our patients. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorena Vivas?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Lorena Vivas and I have been a nurse for 27 years. The last 17 years, the last 19 years being spent as a neurosurgical and an ICU, neurosurgical ICU and ER nurse at Mount Sinai Hospital. Currently, our hospital has over 500 vacancies. And let me state to you that this is a problem that is not new. We have been deliberately understaffed for the past five to six years and the COVID pandemic just made it worse. We have rang the alarms. We even agreed to a staffing grid in 2019, which the hospital just basically ignored and refused to implement. Why? Because profit is more important to them than patient safety. Businessmen in suits have preyed on the good conscience and dedication of nurses. They know that we will show up even if we're being constantly abused, traumatized, and really overworked. And clearly, this is not a sustainable model. We are losing nurses to emotional trauma and burnout and we need your help right now. And that's why we're here. My nonprofit hospital benefits from generous tax breaks and that money and resource should be trickling down to the community and the workers, but it's not. My hospital makes billions each year. At one point, they made 2.8 billion in endowments. Our CEO got a whopping $12.5 million pay in 2019. In 2020, he took in a more humble pay of $7.3 million with $3.1 million in retirement benefits, all while working from the safety of his beachfront Florida mansion while we were out there battling an unknown deadly virus. The public clap for us every day and we, while we saw our pay, our colleagues getting sick, developing PTSD. And what was our bonus? A fake silver dollar that calls us COVID hero. I keep it every day in my foyer to remind myself, this is how little and insignificant they see us. I signed up to work at a nonprofit hospital, but in actuality, they operate like a Fortune 500 company. This is terribly anonymous. While I pay full taxes, they get tax breaks by the millions in order to legally pay the CEOs millions of dollars. Corporate greed is killing my profession. I want to end this with a personal story. I was diagnosed with cancer and they took out a part of my left lung. Within six months, I signed up to go back to that COVID ICU without question because it's my oath and I don't even think of it as a sacrifice. I am, we have an oath to keep to the community and I can only hope that you who have been elected to make the city safer and better, you who we have put our trust into, the same way our patients put our trust in us, that you will be true and brave like all of us here in front of you to your oath. We need your help. You can legislate safe staffing. You can penalize these hospitals who are ignoring patient grids and you can legislate that we are paid fairly and none of our medical healthcare benefits are slashed. Patient over profits at all times. And I'm extending a personal invite to any one of you to please shadow us at work. See how we suffer. See how we make do in unsafe conditions, how we don't even have time to use the bathroom before it's too late. Please help us save our profession. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You said your name was Lorena, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Lorena. And I just, my mom was a cancer patient at Mount Sinai. I had surgery this summer and I think it's because of the nurses while she was there for two weeks that she is truly here today. So I want to commend you because.
Thank you so much.
I don't think that the level of care that you all provide to families is compensated enough and for you to be a patient yourself and still come back, we're failing you. I just want to make, you, in your testimony, you said that deliberately for five years at your hospital, at Mount Sinai, you were, you were understaffed. What, what are some of the responses that you as a nurse are getting? What is the reason? Because it wasn't just from the pandemic. You said it was five years ago or from, from longer. What are some of the reasons that they're saying, hey, we can't hire more nurses? What are, what is it, what they're, what is it that they're saying and how do, like how is that translated to you on the floor while, while you're going in, clocking in for your shifts?
I can speak for my unit, the neurosurgical ICU. Half of our staff has left to become travel agency, have left to join travel agencies, yeah, before the pandemic even, and a lot more even left during the pandemic. You cannot blame them. They were being paid $150 to $200 per hour while we get 50 per hour. And that's, it's, it's much less because I'm a senior nurse now than the younger nurses get much, much less than that. And we have hired new people, but they are unable, the hospital itself is unable to retain its nurses because of the poor working conditions. In my ICU, for example, we have had, we're lucky because we have the union. And through the union, we've had meetings with them, we've had steps, how to, to programs, how to prevent understaffing, but all this was largely ignored. And like what I'm referring to you right now, in 2019, our union was able to win a contract for us to get safe staffing grids. It was largely ignored by the hospital. On the daily, in my unit alone, there's at least two nurses that work from 7:00 to 7:00 PM. They stay till 3:00 AM because there's no nurse to come after them. And at 3:00 AM, they're gonna be understaffed again. And these are really sick, aneurysm patients on ECMO, on CVVH, and a nurse will have to have three to four. It, it just, it's mind-boggling to me how they have money for travel nurses, but they don't have money to hire regular staff. There's, and they keep telling us that there's a nursing shortage, but it's really not. It's a failure to retain nurses because we've been abused for a long time. And, I mean, I'm thankful that I have a union, but I can only imagine hospitals that don't have unions, they, I'm sure they see it much, much worse. And I don't know what else to, to tell you.
Thank you so much.
But I really appreciate that you guys are here to help and I'm, you know, as an aside, it's, I'm happy that I see faces and gender that is like mine, hearing problems from people that look like this because several years ago, this is not possible. And I'm so thankful just seeing you guys here. I used to play basketball with Tiffany.
Oh, really?
Yes, so I am very grateful.
Did she see you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm very grateful that you guys are here to listen to us. If we were all white males in the profession, this would not happen. And I'm speaking very bluntly.
And I want to say thank you and appreciate your testimonies. And that show, Ms. Vivas, that show your dedication to the profession. And I know that many of nurses, that's the way we think, but for you after surgery in less than, about six months, for you to come back, that showed the dedication. And not many profession where people are gonna put others' lives... And not many profession where people are going to put others' lives first before their own. So I thank you. And I thank you all for the commitment to stay, not hanging your coats yet, because guess what? We need nurses, and we need to do everything we can to address it in New York City. And we'll do our very, very, very best to make sure that this time around, like you said, we're in the space for a reason. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Our next panel will be Vivian Phillips, Nicole Rodriguez, Lila Espinoza, Kiera Donis Vogel.
Espinoza, Lila.
And Kiera. Kiera Donis Vogel, are you here?
I'm here.
Oh, sorry. So who's missing? Vivian Phillips, oh, no, Nicole?
Yes, Nicole.
Okay, apologies. Then we can get Vanessa Walden. Oh, there are two Nikols. Okay. Oh, Rodriguez. Okay. Okay, I will add that, Nicole, apologies. We can begin with Vivian, whenever you're ready.
Vivian?
Good afternoon. My name is Vivian Phillips, and I want to thank you for hearing us. I am a registered professional nurse at Kingsburg Jewish Medical Center, a part of the One Brook and Health System. And I've been a nurse for over 30 years. Class of 1976, graduated from Kings County Hospital School of Nursing. First, I worked as an emergency room nurse, ICU nurse, now I'm a case manager. My job is to coordinate care, educating, discharging patients safely, interacting with insurance companies, coordinating referrals with social services, basically making sure my patients are getting the treatment that they need. Case management work is really important because our patients can be very sick. Many have chronic illnesses, many have poor health and several diagnoses. And when they're discharged, we need to make sure that they have the support to continue with their care at home. We also are understaffed. The understaffing of nurses at my hospital, when it comes to the hospital, you want a nurse who's not overwhelmed and stressed out, who doesn't have several lot of patients down the hall that they're trying to look after at the same time. In a hospital, you need timely and accurate observation and care. It is very upsetting to constantly feel like you're falling short as a nurse. It makes it hard to retain nurses. Our pre-pandemic conditions were not ideal, but COVID-19 magnified our problems tenfold. Our patients are sicker than ever and we're more understaffed than ever. There was this idea that hospitals in Brooklyn, basically our safety net hospitals, could reduce acute care beds and essential health services, and primary care services would expand to serve our community's needs. But it's not going to plan. There are not enough primary and preventative care services available. Patients have not been educated and empowered on how to access these services. And now there are fewer and fewer hospital-based services to serve their needs. I feel like we're failing our communities because I can see patients suffering. I can see the negative outcomes. The people at the top making the decisions are so far removed from the reality that nurses see every day that they wouldn't even adjust the plan to meet the needs of our patients. But that's what we're asking for, for the hospital executives to listen to the nurses. We understand that we are caring for human beings. They need to be treated with dignity. They need equitable quality care. Nurses look at the evidence, read the studies, and see firsthand with our patients that safe staffing saves lives. I saw that very personally recently from a different perspective. I became a patient at a hospital that was not a safety net hospital. I was so terrified as a patient. I had a nurse at my bedside who saw the change in my condition and was able to react quickly. I felt so grateful that there was enough nursing staff that day in that hospital because my outcome could have been different. I want my patients to experience that level of care, quality care always. I want a fair contract that guarantees safe staffing, that helps recruits and retain nurses for quality care and for health equity. I want a fair contract that includes community input about the services our hospital and our patients want. I want to do everything that we can to improve the health of our community. The safety net hospitals have been functioning for too long in survival mode. We need them to thrive, not just survive. The safety nets helped COVID help New York City during the pandemic. We need them now more than ever. We want the same for our patients. We want them to do more for us than just survive. We want them to really thrive. It's time for our safety net hospitals to invest in patient care and the frontline nurses who deliver it so we can all thrive.
Thank you. You know, because you graduated since 1976?
Yes.
So I could not stop you, but if everyone, please try to keep it with the two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, Nicole Rodriguez, oh, sorry. That's not, no, we don't have her. Kiera Donis Vogel.
Good afternoon. My name is Kiera Downs Vogel, and I have been a labor and delivery nurse at Mount Sinai West for four years. When you are short-staffed, you have to make sacrifices. Your assignment is just too heavy. But what do you sacrifice? You can't sacrifice the orders and duties that you have to administer your medications and monitor your patient's status. You cannot sacrifice your documentation because this is a legal record showing what you do. But time is not infinite, and we cannot be in two places at once. Nurses are not just there to check temperatures and give meds and report to doctors. We are educators, supporters, and fierce patient advocates. So we sacrifice the relationship with our patients and their support people. We sacrifice teaching, building trust, and getting to know them. When staffing is short, management sacrifices are breaks. We have been called heroes, but we are not superhuman. We need to eat, we need to rest, we need to decompress. When we don't, we are at risk from making mistakes. And when we make mistakes, people get hurt. When staffing gets even shorter, and it does, we run the risk of actual harm. Medications and assessments have to be prioritized, and sometimes a medical complication has worsened because we were unable to catch it in a timely manner. Why? Because we simply cannot be in two places at once because we are drowning. Our job feels unsafe for both us and our patients. In labor and delivery, sometimes this means that in a birth, when there should be two nurses present, one for the birthing person and one for the baby being born, there is only one nurse. Sometimes in that single room, we need to be in two places at once, but we cannot. There is truth in our chant, "Safe Staffing Saves Lives." And we, the citizens of New York, can say that in our hospitals, we will provide staffing that is supported by evidence to protect patients and nurses. And this may mean that a change has to come to how our hospitals are managed and our nonprofit executives are paid. As an example, the state of California has safe staffing legislation and somehow still manages to keep their hospitals open and running.
Thank you, Lila Espinoza.
Good afternoon. My name is Lilia Espinoza, and I want to thank the committee for holding this hearing today. I have been a nurse in a medical surgical unit at Mount Sinai Main Hospital in Manhattan for almost six years. I'm speaking out now because the hospital has no plan to retain nurses or improve staffing levels. This is further the crisis of nursing in the city. On top of this, hospital executives are proposing cuts to our healthcare and benefits. This is unacceptable. We are proud of the work we do on a daily basis and proud of the work we did during the height of the COVID pandemic. Nurses were applauded as heroes. We put our own lives and the health of our families on the line. Someone needed to step up, and we did. Now, we're asking hospitals to step up with a real plan to address the staffing crisis they created even before COVID. At the height of the Omicron wave a year ago, many nurses got sick, so our patient ratios increased. Prior to this wave, there were only a few days where we would have critically high patient loads, but we were able to push ourselves and provide the care our patients needed. Now, every day, we face unsafe conditions. Frequently, there's a 1 to 7 ratio, which used to be an emergency situation. This is now the norm. It creates a hectic and exhausting environment. We cannot provide adequate care. Nurses are getting increasingly more burned out, and patient care is suffering. We're fed up with the lack of support from hospital administrators and upper management. Like many of my colleagues, I'm speaking out today because we know hospitals have the means to address our concerns. They pay executives millions of dollars. They spend millions more on public relations campaigns, yet they've done nothing to address the hiring, recruitment, and retention of nurses. Now, they want to cut our healthcare benefits. This will only lead to more challenges in retaining nurses. My colleagues and I wonder why Mount Sinai, one of the nation's flagship hospitals, has no plan to hire and retain nurses and make their hospitals safe and desirable places to work. I call on the hospital to commit to a fair contract with a real plan to retain nurses that includes a just increase in wages and benefits and a real staffing plan that puts patients over profits. Nurses and patients cannot wait any longer. Lastly, I say to the hospital trustees who want to cut our healthcare, please remember when you recognized us as heroes and stop any planned cuts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You may begin. Apologies. Can you repeat your name?
Vanessa Walden.
Oh, Vanessa, thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you all for taking this meeting with us. My name is Vanessa Walden, and I'm a home care nurse at Montefiore Home Health Agency. And I was born and raised in the Bronx, and I still live in the Bronx. And I have been taking care of the Bronx community as a home care nurse at Montefiore for the past 22 years. I'm here to talk about Montefiore's care for my community. Montefiore says on their website that it is distinguished among, it's distinguished among premier academic medical centers for its deep commitment to the community. And our community desperately needs that care. In terms of overall health outcomes, the Bronx is the unhealthiest county in New York State. We also come in dead last in healthcare access with the least access to primary care physicians, dentists, and mental health providers. Montefiore is failing our community. At the Home Health Agency, we have seen a significant cut in the staffing. Three years ago, we had about 100 nurses, and we had two mother-child health programs to take care of our high-risk pregnant mothers and their babies. Montefiore filled a small but important gap in this community, one that provided preventive care in the face of the highest infant mortality rates and the highest maternal death rates in the city. Now, we only have about 50 nurses, and one of the mother-child programs have been cut, and this was due to lack of reimbursement, not enough reimbursement for the program, they said. And the other one is being quietly closed out due to lack of grant funding. At first, Montefiore said that they would suspend the closure of the program after nurses spoke out about how the closure would harm mothers and babies in the Bronx and Yonkers. Then they went back on their word and continued to slowly cut the program out of existence by not taking on new referrals and discharging current clients off of the program. Overall, our patient census went from about 1,000 patients at any given time to about 650. And the home care nurses are spending less time with the patients that they do see because of constantly new guidelines and ever-increasing complex documentation to justify funding. We still cover the same geographic area, so the travel time between patients has increased, thereby decreasing the time spent with patients and the care of patients. There are fewer intake nurses, so the processing time for referrals has also increased. All this means is that our community members are recovering from, our community, I'm sorry, all this means is that our community members who are recovering from surgeries, the elderly or needing mother-baby support, many of whom have comorbidities, are getting less care. To add insult to injury, we have to choose between patients we can accept onto the program and those we can't. We are told to prioritize Westchester patients, and this makes me so angry. I hear from patients, including my own family members, my neighbors, that they feel that Montefiore has abandoned them. Young pregnant mothers with preeclampsia are ending up in emergency care with strokes. Community members who can't travel will go to Montefiore Westchester facilities because those ERs have waiting rooms and their waiting times are so much shorter. It seems like Montefiore really prefers patients with money, and we know that racial disparities in the healthcare have deadly health outcomes for communities of color. The system has broken down all the way into healthcare and shouldn't be that way. I want the public to know that nurses are fighting for quality care for the community. Hospitals must listen and respond to the community's input with the healthcare services that people need. We want to be able to say that Montefiore has improved the health outcomes of our community. To do that, Montefiore needs to stop putting profits before patients. They can do more, and they need to take care of the community that they say that they are committed to. And we're asking the council to help us assist to make sure Montefiore takes care of the community that they say that they are committed to.
Yes, ma'am. We're doing our best, and thank you for being here, and I appreciate you. And this young lady, since 1976, you look like you were born yesterday. Probably what? So thank you for your commitment to nursing. And thank you all. Thank you. Appreciate your time. And for the next panel, when you hear that sound, that's when your time is up. Try to summarize because we have a lot more coming. Thank you.
Oh, it's not on. Oh, should I repeat it? Okay, so the next panel will be remote panel. I have to repeat it because I did not turn on my mic. If you are testifying remotely, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and you may begin once the sergeant at arms sets the clock and queues you. So our remote panel would be Dr. Libby Wetterer first, and then Dr. Colleen Akon and Dr. Shane Solger, followed by William Smith, Cameron Delon. Whenever you're ready, Dr. Wetter.
Starting time.
Hi there. Just give me one moment as I pull up my remarks. It's wonderful to be here today. Thank you.
We could hear you.
Okay, great. Just give me one moment.
Can you start?
I'm so sorry. Just pulling up my remarks. But yeah, my name is Dr. Libby Wetterer. I use she/her pronouns. I am a third-year family medicine resident at Montefiore Medical Center in the Bronx. I am here as a part of Montefiore's newly-formed union with the Committee of Interns and Residents under SEIU. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today in support of my nursing colleagues and about an important public health matter, the chronic understaffing and unsustainable working conditions experienced by our city's healthcare workers. It's been an honor to listen to testimony over the last few hours, and I'm just here to add my support as a fellow worker in the hospital system of New York City. Like my nursing colleagues, I've spent the past few years on the front lines of the pandemic, and every day, I see up close how the understaffing and under-resourcing is harming healthcare workers, both residents and nurses alike. I want to be very clear. Addressing understaffing and the working conditions of healthcare workers is an urgent matter of public health. Nurses and physicians are responsible for the health and well-being of every patient that walks through our doors, and we do everything possible to make sure they receive the best possible care. Nurses in the hospital I work in have told me that they are so overburdened with tasks, they are often split between administering medications and taking patients' vital signs. I've had some nurses show me their patient load in the ED as an explanation of why they couldn't administer medications on time. I became a doctor to accompany patients and communities towards health, and I'm fortunate to work with so many nurses, physicians, and other caregivers who are dedicated to and passionate about providing exceptional care for the diverse and historically underserved communities of the Bronx. I am so grateful for the opportunity to testify among them. Nurses and residents are absolutely essential, and without us, Montefiore's hospitals and clinics could not function. We take care of patients from admission to discharge, and because Montefiore, as aforementioned, is the dominant healthcare system in the Bronx, that means we're responsible for a large portion of the entire borough. While we love our jobs, our working conditions are pushing us to breaking points. Due to understaffing, our patient loads, both resident and nursing patient loads alike, continue to increase.
You can continue. You're almost done? Try to wrap it up. Sergeant? Thank you.
We as residents are...
We can hear you now.
Because our patient loads are continuing to increase, we as residents are forming a union in order to fight along with NISNA to get Montefiore and other for-profit or not-for-profit healthcare systems to work with a non-capitalistic moral compass so that we can better treating the residents of the Bronx and New York City at large.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Colleen Asham?
Starting time.
But I can try. Yeah.
Okay, whenever you're ready.
Sure. One second. I just need to take a quick call.
Should we come back to you if you are not ready yet? Okay, Dr. Colleen, we will come back to you. If... Dr. Shane Solger, if you're here? He's here.
Oh, sorry. There we go. Sorry, I reflexively hit unmute, which muted myself. But thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Dr. Shane Solger. I'm an internal medicine and emergency medicine resident physician in Brooklyn and a delegate of my union, the Committee of Interns and Residents, SEIU. I really appreciate the opportunity to testify today so I can support my nursing colleagues and to talk about our chronic understaffing and unsustainable working conditions that we experience as the city's healthcare workers. It's really hard for us to try to work in this environment where we're always kind of trying to juggle with our nursing colleagues the care of our patients, especially when we know that we could always, you know, go one step further. We just don't have the resources to do so. I remember on one occasion, working in the cardiac care unit, I actually had to leave to draw time-sensitive labs on a patient that was just awaiting a bed in our cardiac care unit because the nurse in the emergency department was tasked with taking care of my patient that was having a heart attack, as well as three other critically ill patients and six or seven other less sick patients. I worked in the pediatric emergency department for the last two weeks, and we've had one nurse to take care of anywhere from 10 to 15 patients, irrespective of how sick they've been. And in some instances, the nurses are pleading with us to place IVs or show us, and they've shown us where to find medications so we can help them with their nursing tasks. In medicine, we work as a team, and when any part of that team is being disrespected or pushed to the breaking point and impacts all of us, there's not a single resident physician in this city that doesn't have a story to tell on how they've seen the lack of nurses impact their work and the care that we can deliver. I used to be a physician in the Navy, and when I practiced in California, we had mandatory staffing ratios that were respected and an on-call system for the nurses. That when nurses called out, there was someone to come in to maintain those safe ratios. The nurses had appropriate ancillary staff to support, staff supports so they could work to the top of their licenses, and they weren't using their training to take and document vital signs. The bottom line is this: New York City hospitals must invest in their healthcare workers. We need fair contracts and safe staffing so we can improve our healthcare system and ensure New York City is the healthiest it can be. Is that it?
Thank you. And one of my questions for you, it's not really a question, it's a statement more. I appreciate the fact that you stepped out to testify in support of understanding the staffing ratio, how important it is in delivering of the best quality healthcare, I would say. So I thank you for giving the testimony to support the nurses. Thank you.
Thank you. We can go back to Dr. Colleen Asham?
I...
You just said...
If I could ask you something today, MPO now?
We can't hear you properly.
We cannot hear you, doc. Move on to the next.
Okay, we will have to move on to William Smith. We can come back for Dr. Colleen.
Thank you.
You may begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for the opportunity to deliver testimony. Metropolitan, on behalf of Metropolitan Hospital's Community Advisory Board, Metropolitan Hospital continues to be a resource for the East Harlem community in response to the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. We're incredibly proud of the efforts made by hospital administration and staff in patient care, testing, and vaccine delivery. A hospital has shown an ability to respond quickly in times of crisis to meet the ongoing needs of our community, and we thank the tireless commitment of our nursing staff and obviously thank the support of the city council in hosting this open dialogue. Just some key stats. Our hospital has had 8% growth in operating room volume for the fiscal year. We've also seen 30% growth in emergency department volume for this year as we continue our mission serving the growing needs of our East Harlem and Upper East Side community. The ability to recruit nurses remains a struggle. While the recent local law on salary transparency for posted positions may level the playing field, we have discovered that our municipal hospital system needs more resources to better compete for nursing talent. Salary levels of our hospital system must continue to remain competitive. Rising inflation has significantly increased the cost of living in our city, making it difficult financially and less attractive for nursing professionals to accept roles in our municipality. The ability for the system to recruit seasoned, strong nurse leaders will continue to present challenges unless we work collaboratively on creating enhanced work environments and cultivate impactful solutions. We must think further about innovative ways to better incentivize the teaching experience for current practitioners. It can be more advantageous in certain instances financially for an adjunct to serve in a part-time role versus teaching full-time. So we want to figure out ways to reduce that gap. And furthermore, nurse-professor requirements may need to be reassessed given that there are significant barriers for the ability to serve and support that as a PhD is preferred in many instances. There's a need for more training programs and expanded recruitment for nurse-clinical and administrative support roles, such as patient care associates. While we anticipate nursing shortages to continue to present challenges to the entire hospital system, we need to think creatively. And our cab would like to congratulate Hunter College Nursing School on its recent nurse practitioner program and its generous donation from Estee Lauder. This presents an example of how public-private partnerships can present opportunities for our city to work together with private industry to advance our joint mission, which is advancing our communities and serving our needs from a health perspective. We strongly encourage the council to support a resolution encouraging congressional budgetary and legislative support to support nurse recruitment, education, and financial assistance. Currently, the city does not provide tuition reimbursement for nurses in terms of their student loans. We recommend that the council and the mayoral administration develop more innovative educational programs and educational initiatives to incentivize current and prospective nurses to remain in the field and remain in our hospital system. It is evident that collaboration on all levels is necessary to tangibly alleviate the student loan burden for nurses as that is a barrier to gaining entry into this critical field. We thank Health and Hospital Central Office for working Metropolitan Hospital and making sure we have institutional support and resources for effective recruitment. Nursing staff have praised our chief executive officer, Christina Contreras, for her commitment to respecting the nursing practice as its own core function. Our community advisory board is fully committed to expanding the dialogue and engagement with our municipal and state legislators to better support our hospital in the broader health and hospital system. Our cab is committed to continuing this critical dialogue in conjunction with local community partners and healthcare policy and labor advocates to further enrich the nurse recruitment process. Safety is a major concern in the community as crime, especially major traumas like shootings, have been increasing over the past year. Recruitment will continue to be a challenge, not only for our hospital, but for other hospitals and community health clinics who serve our community in our need of nurses and nurse practitioners. And we share the concerns of our larger community around these high crime levels and the impact that will have on the ability for our hospitals to recruit critical talent for their facilities. We thank the members of the committee and the broader city council for your continued support of our hospitals. We need better resources to recruit and retain the next generation of nurses. And we call on the council to initiate substantive dialogues with our congressional delegation to reassess the minimum number of years for student loan forgiveness for nurses and think about ways to support broader healthcare workers as a whole. Thank you so much for your time and your service.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, and we're going to follow up with you because I was looking at your testimony as well and your recommendation. So we take recommendation very seriously, and I'm very much interested. All right? Thank you.
Carmen De Leon?
Starting time.
You may begin.
Okay, I'm sorry. Oh, hi. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Carmen De Leon. I am the president of Local 768, and I represent many of the titles within H&amp;H, who are support staff to nursing. I'm going to talk to you not as a president alone, but also as a respiratory therapist, associate respiratory therapist level one. And the hospital that I worked in was Harlem Hospital. I'm here today to advocate for the ancillary staff. There's not enough of us. I can tell you personally, during COVID, I could have handled 12 patients on a ventilator or anywhere from 6 to 10 patients on a ventilator, plus 12 or 14 patients that needed respiratory treatments because that was the line of defense at that time for COVID before we understood the disease. It becomes difficult to be able to support our nursing staff and our doctors if I cannot be at the bedside to adequately service the patients to give quality patient care. As well as being a respiratory therapist, we have physicians assistants and licensed creative arts therapists, social workers. These are all physical therapists. These are all of these ancillary staff that with working as a part of a team, we help to move the patients along to have them discharged either to a long-term care facility and moving. But if I cannot be at the bedside to help a nurse with a critically ill patient because I'm stuck somewhere else with another patient because we are short-staffed, that becomes an issue. And I've heard everything today, and I sympathize because it boggles my own mind as to the level of salaries that are appropriated towards the municipal workers in H&amp;H. The top end of the salary for a respiratory therapist is $89,000, the top end of the salary.
Time expired.
For social... Thank you. I'm just going to say this: We need more help, and we need a raise in our salaries across the board within H&amp;H. You will not be able to recruit. And like nurses, those people are leaving to take travel jobs in other states, not only because of the money, but because they don't have to be vaccinated as well. Thank you for this time, and I appreciate you listening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Dr. Colleen Asham?
Oh, my God. Look, give me one second. This is the third time.
Starting time.
Good day. This is Dr. Colleen Asham. I am an internal medicine resident at One Brooklyn Health, and I am so grateful. Also a VP for one of the longest resident unions that has been here. I am so grateful, this opportunity to speak today. Is everyone hearing me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry. I'm so grateful for this opportunity. I am currently at work, as you can see, and this is why there was so much technical difficulty having getting myself on because I'm currently in the ICU. And OVH is in the... I don't know if many people know, but has been in the news because of some technical issues. So has been a strain on our nursing staff. And I mean, many of them having to manage multiple patients with so much IT issues that's going on, many times using paper form. So it is a... We need our nursing staff, our clinical staff, to expand by so much because many times residents tend to... Because it's about patient care, we do our best to ensure that... Ensure that we do what is best for our patients. So we will run down to pharmacy for nurses. We will sit on a one-to-one sometime so that the nurse can just leave to go to the restroom for a minute. I mean, there are so many times that the nurse is overwhelmed with so many other duties or draw bloods because the nurse has to treat another patient that is more critical. And it's not that it is beneath us in any means necessary, but the burden, the strain
Time has expired.
that our colleagues, the nurses within the New York City healthcare system, have to endure is intense. And COVID exacerbated that. Many other health concerns within New York City has worsened that. And now, we just plead with you to consider helping us ally with different nursing organizations to expand the efforts to bring in more nurses within the hospitals in New York City. Especially, one of our hospitals, not only in the medical aspect, but also in our mental health facilities. When there is downtime, for instance, in the facility, sometimes the nurses may have to see or monitor several patients so that the medical attending will come and have to clear multiple patients, one by one. And there is no way that one nurse can manage four to six patients all at once and provide the appropriate care that's needed.
Thank you so much for taking the time to testify today. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And now we will go back to our in-person panels. I will be calling on the next panel. Matt Allen, Flandresa Jones, Zulma Gutierrez, Deborah Sarah Mlow. Zulma. So we got Flandresa Jones, Matt.
Deborah.
Deborah. So I kind of changed the panels a bit here. Thought they were a bit different. Oh, apologies. Matt Allen, you may begin.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much for this opportunity. I have a written testimony that I believe has been submitted to you. In the sake of time, I'm just going to keep things short and to the point. So I think, you know, it's... Um, so I think, you know, it's, there's not much more to say than what we heard earlier from that representative here was, who was here from the Hospital Association of New York. I mean, you didn't have to read between the lines of what she said. They prioritize CEO salaries more than they do the nurses. They prioritize retaining their CEO more than they do the nurses. That's the problem here, right? We're here today to blow the whistle on the corporate greed of the supposed nonprofit hospitals. They need to stop getting these exceptions. We need New Yorkers and we need our elected officials like you to realize the truth of this matter because that's what's getting at the heart of this. We do not have staffing because they don't think we're important enough. We don't have staffing because what's more important to them is the bottom line versus what's happening at the bedside with the patients. So thank you so much for this opportunity and we're glad that this is finally getting the attention it needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you, Flandressa Jones. You may begin.
Good afternoon. Thanks again for having us this afternoon. My name is Flandeshia Jones. Um, I'm a nurse and I work at Bronx Care Health System. I've been a nurse at a telemetry unit for the past eighteen years and I've been a nurse for over thirty-eight years. I'm here with my colleagues to share my concerns about staffing and retention. In the telemetry unit where I work, um, we do electronic monitoring and these are patients who have experienced heart attacks or strokes and have been kept under close observation. On a good day, each nurse is responsible for six patients and the staffing ratio should be one to four. On a bad day, which we have more days than often, we take care of up to ten patients. Nurses are stretching and we have been, we have more patients than we can manage. Patients are not receiving the care they need because we simply cannot get to them on time. More patients are at risk of dying when there aren't enough nurses at the bedside and more nurses leave the bedside because they are tired of working short-staffed. This is why we are fighting so hard for safe staffing ratios in our contracts. Beyond the telemetry unit, there's a high turnover rate at Bronx Care that exacerbates the staffing ratios. Competition is high. Younger nurses are living for better wages. More experienced nurses are left to carry an increasing heavy workload which leads to burnout and burnout causes sickness. Sick nurses call out which leads to less staffing which creates more burnout. This becomes a vicious cycle. We are calling on our bosses to invest in hiring and retaining enough nurses to keep patients safe. Nurses like me continue to care because we care about the Bronx community that we call our home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zulma Gutierrez. You may begin.
My name is Zulma Gutierrez. I've been a nurse for fifteen years. Um, currently working in the neuro ICU for the last four. It's one of our newest units at the hospital. The neuroscience ICU acuity has been very busy post-COVID. We are chronically understaffed. As you can imagine, our neuro ICU is a very complicated specialty where travel nurses and floating nurses are unable to transfer skills. Our patients are often confused and need full-time monitoring. We do not use sedation in many cases because we need to monitor the mental status of our patients and be able to detect any potentially fatal changes quickly. Working short-staffed is hazardous for patients as well as staff on our unit. We only have two senior nurses working the night shift when we should have at least six. Both nurses are in constant demand causing mental and physical fatigue due to overwhelming workload and excessive responsibilities. While we should be caring for only one, at the most two patients, our patient load can be tripled, even quadrupled at night. Our patients have many needs and we, we don't have the support for routine life-saving checks and basic care. Most of our post-surgical patients require monitoring every fifteen minutes for two hours. These patients are vulnerable to hemorrhage. A nurse floated from another unit or a travel nurse without intensive training will check blood pressure but may miss checking the pupils or looking for early signs of abnormal bleeding. Simple mistakes can be deadly on our unit. I see the impacts of short staffing on other units. We have had significant number of postpartum patients on my unit even as Montefiore has cut desperately need maternal child health programs. Just recently, we had a thirty-one-year-old pregnant patient who was declared brain dead due to preventable complication. No one expects this as a result of pregnancy. She never got to meet her baby, now an orphan. Our nurses are overworked and suffer from mental exhaustion. There is no time for planning. We must hit the floor running and the day is a spin. The factory-like pressure makes us feel that management doesn't care about the compassion that comes with nursing. I continue to work at Montefiore because I grew up in this, in the neighborhood. I'm speaking up for the community, my patients, my colleagues and family members that still live in that neighborhood. Our nurses struggle to afford living on their own. After all we have faced during COVID, we should not have to beg management for a failed contract. It should be understood. Montefiore has money to sponsor events like Mariah Carey but don't want to support nursing care demands. If we as a society, as a healthcare facility, care for our nurses, our nurses will have the ability and stamina to continue providing care for the people of the Bronx and New York City. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Sorrello, that's fine. Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Sorrello and I am a nurse at Morgan Stanley Children's Hospital in New York Presbyterian. And I can assure you the tripe endemic is real and the hospital's unsafe plan to increase beds does not come with a plan to increase staffing. Uh, but I'm not here to talk about that specifically. I'm glad to talk to you about what's going on right now. My colleagues and I are fighting for a fair contract that recognizes that nurses need good healthcare for ourselves and for our families. As we begin to bargain our contract, I am becoming exceedingly concerned about the future of our healthcare. I care for a twenty-four-year-old daughter. She has multiple chronic illnesses. Every day she takes twenty-four different medications, including some very costly injectables. She has multiple doctor's appointments every week, including many treatments. Her medications and medical care are literally keeping her alive. I provide my family's healthcare. The thought that my benefits could be reduced is very stressful. I just, I wouldn't know what I would do. I know I'm not the only one. There's many people with stories like me. Uh, and we count on our healthcare benefits. Good benefits are a major factor in nursing retention and NYPD has done nothing and, uh, to keep nurses at the bedside. More patients die when there aren't enough nurses and more nurses leave the bedside when they are forced to work short-staffed. Now, instead of rewarding us for our hard work during the pandemic, they're fighting against us. I, I don't see how they can retain nurses without good benefits. Nurses won't be able to stay healthy or keep our families healthy without quality healthcare. Hospital executives paid themselves millions during the pandemic in sky-high salaries and bonuses. We're calling on them to invest in keeping nurses healthy and in hiring and retaining enough nurses to keep us and our patients safe. After all we've been through during the pandemic, the risk that we put ourselves in to save the lives, it's unconscionable that New York Presbyterian consider cutting our healthcare. I just wanna thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, and our next panel will be Nicole Portillo. Pauline James, Colleen Orristo, Iona Fulkis.
Did you say Orristo?
Yes. Only Nicole is part of that. Only she is. They are, uh, no, no, just Nicole. The rest of these two are from NYU and I don't know who this person is. Mm-hmm, oh, sorry. Nicole Portillo. Who is in different groups?
Uh, those people are in different groups compared to those people.
Okay, you can go. Uh, so, um, apologies. Nicole, you may begin. Portillo.
I have ten years of emergency room experience. Since 2016, I've worked in the emergency department at New York Presbyterian Children's Hospital of New York. During the COVID-19 pandemic, I served on the front lines while pregnant. I continue to serve today through the RSV epidemic. I'm here to share how comprehensive coverage impacted my healthcare journey. Earlier this year, my husband and I wanted to expand our family. However, a checkup mammogram revealed an abnormality. My NYPD physician wanted to confirm the results with a second test, this time at an NYPD facility. Despite the referral and efforts, I was turned away based on my age. Fortunately, my insurance covered a mammogram outside the NYPD system that test confirmed that it was breast cancer. I received surgery also out of network. My post-surgical care included radiation therapy. I decided to receive that treatment at NYPD while I continued to work for two reasons. First, I needed to maintain my health insurance. Second, I wanted to support my already understaffed colleagues as much as I could. Cancer ended my chance at naturally expanding my family, but my health insurance ensured that it didn't end my life. It gave me a path to get diagnosed and treated. Our current coverage will pay for the medication to keep the cancer from reoccurring. I'm grateful for this chance and God willing, I will survive to see my son grow up. Unfortunately, NYPD seeks to cut health benefits by decreasing in-network providers, functionally eliminating the option of out-of-network coverage, limiting pharmacy choices, eliminating coverage for high-cost generic medication and managed conditions ranging from asthma to cancer. The considered changes will worsen the healthcare in the NYPD system. Reducing benefits will make it harder to retain or hire nurses. This will increase staffing shortages and diminish patient care. A system that values being number one should similarly value its frontline. During the pandemic, we nurses were celebrated as heroes. Now that the focus has shifted, we are being cast aside for the bottom line. Personally, while many nurses left, I stayed at NYPD. Even when it failed me when I was most vulnerable, I supported the NYPD system because I believed in their mission. Now, it is considering changes that would make its frontline staff choose between receiving life-saving healthcare or financial death. The potential cuts will feel, it feels like a personal assault. As a nurse, a mother and a cancer survivor, I urgently and respectfully ask for your help in protecting our healthcare so that we can continue to care for New York. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Colleen Orristo.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Chair and Council. Uh, my name is Colleen Edmund Orristo. I'm the president of the Haitian American Nurses Association. I am a nurse by training and profession and a nurse educator. Um, I just wanna offer quickly some possible solutions to the issues at hand. One of the huge problems in the staffing issues and nursing retention is the educational component of it as it relates to preparing nurses for tomorrow. Uh, not enough nurse educators. Uh, their salaries are a challenge to begin with as well. We must come up with innovative solutions to the problem at hand. Before COVID, there was a problem. COVID further exacerbated this issue. Uh, there's not much one can do about the graying of the profession as we know that Exodus is taking place at that end as well. We ask for educational, that educational programs need to be conceptualized, new initiatives to draw potential students to the profession. Title VII funding needs to be increased. Grants can draw those not normally able to afford a nursing degree to the profession. Unequal access to education is a well-documented barrier for those students pursuing a nursing degree in black and brown communities. I call today, I ask council to look at the state of career and technical education programs in secondary schools where new generation of nurses can be created through programs that will support the licensed practical nurses and the licensed vocational nurses as well. When we speak about nurses, I'm not just speaking about the registered nurse, but also the LPN and the LVN. Those individuals provide support to nurses at the bedside and that is much needed as well. Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you so much. Nicole Portillo, I'm sorry for what you have to go through and actual leadership on your part. Even we struggle, like I said, we put our lives second and put others first. So thank you and I pray that you going through a good time coming in the future and you can see your son grow and many more good things coming your way. So I hope, I pray for the best. And thank you, your recommendation. I did not get your testimony. Did you send it in?
Yes, I did, I did. And I also have copies from council members as well.
So yes, I would like to get a copy of the recommendation because we take that seriously.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And our next panel will be Sheena Tanis, Pauline James, Iona Fulkis. Um, do you have your written testimonies with you, copies?
Um, it was sent in.
Okay.
My testament is sent in, yes. Iona Fulkis, you should have it.
Love and copies.
It was submitted.
It was submitted.
I'm sorry?
It was submitted.
It was submitted?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Anyhow, um, let's begin with Sheena Tanis.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to thank the Committee on Hospitals for holding this hearing so that we can discuss this extremely important issue. My name is Sheena Tanis and I am the Assistant Head Nurse in the Coronary Care Unit at Brookdale Hospital and I have been a nurse for seventeen years. The staff and retention of nurses is an extremely important issue in hospitals. The understaffing and increased turnover of nurses has been an issue for many years. In my unit, we have always faced staffing issues. However, COVID came and exacerbated the problem. Currently, we are less than ideally staffed, which is a major concern because it places greater responsibilities on nurses that are already dealing with difficulties in their own duties. These types of additional responsibilities leave the potential for mistakes to be made which unfortunately place patients at greater risk. No nurse wants to place a patient at risk. We never want to make a decision that turns out to be a poor situation or a poor outcome for a patient because of their lack of care or their lack of the ability to give care because the nurse just wasn't able to attend to the patient on time. But until the staffing crisis is addressed, this will unfortunately be the reality in many hospitals. There are many things that have been contributing to the growing staffing shortage post-COVID. We have seen an increasing number of intermediate to newer nurses deciding not to remain on staff and others opting for travel contracts where the money is more lucrative or working for agencies that are giving them higher wages than staff nurses. Because of this, we are now seeing a rise in the travel nurse and agency nurses in the hospitals. Sometimes they outnumber the number of staff nurses on the units. Many of these nurses are new to the profession and with limited experience and no commitment to the institution, they are placing our patients at risk and it shows in their performance on the floors. Unfortunately, they place a heavier burden on the staff nurses. We are seeing many nurses make the decision to leave the industry because of the wages and the work conditions. New nurses coming into the industry are extremely concerned about their salaries and how they will manage student loan debt, saving, buying a home and starting a family. In an industry as demanding as nursing, we must continue to prevent the high turnover because of the abuses that we're facing and the lack of administrative support that comes along with low wages and increased responsibilities. There is a new generation of nurses committed to finding balance between work and home. To address this, we need to build more robust programs that help new nurses transition into practice. We also need programs to aid nurses who are in the sandwich generation who are taking care of raising their children while simultaneously caring for aging parents. who are taking care of raising their children while simultaneously caring for aging parents. There are needs for higher salaries commensurate with the hard work that is being done. We should be able to get wages that we may own our own home. We can send our children to college. We can take care of our aging parents and even have a vacation. Thank you.
Thank you. Pauline James.
Hi, Ms. Shina.
Thank you. I appreciate you.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. My name is Pauline James. I'm a member of the 1199 SEIU and I've been an RN for over fifteen years working at Brookdale Hospital OBH, which is a Level II trauma hospital. I would like to thank the City Council for taking the time to have this hearing, to hear about our staffing issues we are currently facing in the industry. I am a nurse in the emergency department, a unit with patients that require emergency life-saving care such as gunshot, stroke, and cardiac arrest patients. However, we are a unit experiencing daily extreme staffing shortages. A typical day shift can leave us short of almost ten nurses while night shifts oftentimes are much worse and have half the nurses needed to provide the care that our patients need. The rapid turnover and shortage of nurses on the floor can negatively impact patient care and the quality of our communities. It also negatively impacts us as nurses who are pushed to do double and triple the workload, thus causing burnout and fatigue. Our families see us coming home late and extremely tired after working a twelve or even a twenty-four-hour shift, doing double the tasks because enough nurses are not on the staff. Because of the work environment and the hassle that comes from understaffing in the hospital, we are seeing nurses leave the industry at rapid rates. Many are realizing their worth and are moving to industries where they can earn enough to support themselves and their families, especially with the high living costs we face in a city like New York. My hospital was drastically affected by COVID-19, especially the emergency department. Many of our nurses retired earlier than initially planned and there has been a limited number of new nurses coming in, of which many quickly resign. We have grown reliant on agency nurses who are often undertrained and don't know the necessary protocol to work in the emergency department. We need to improve hospital working environments, putting safety and quality first and ensuring the number of nurses in every unit of the hospital is enough to cover the number of patients who need care. Better wages and hiring incentives are two ways we can begin to attract more nurses to the industry and retain the nurses we already have who are experiencing extreme burnout. We must remember that one day we too shall become sick. We will need experienced registered nurses to care for us. We need them now to provide the care that our current patients need. Thank you.
Thank you. Iona Folkes.
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Iona Folkes and I'm a member of 1199 SEIU. I've been a nurse at St. John's Episcopal Hospital in Far Rockaway for over thirty-one years and we care for a very vulnerable population. First, I would like to thank the City Council for allowing us to speak here today. Since the pandemic, the issue in the healthcare system have become a major story. The cost of healthcare, staffing shortage, and the concerns for equity has been highlighted or magnified by the COVID-19. And I appreciate the growing concern and the newfound interest in providing appropriate staffing level. Chronic understaffing in hospitals is not a new problem. Nurses have been experiencing understaffing in the workplace for a very long time and have been fighting against it for years. The number of nurses on duty is extremely important to the patient care quality and nursing morale. In the hospital, we are often overworked because of staffing shortage, doubling our responsibility and patient load, which contributes to burnout. The nursing industry has an extremely high turnover rate and I have seen many people come into the job very excited and quickly disappear. Nurses are here to help their patients, but the naivety and the reality of the unhealthy working environment, the lack of administrative support, and the understaffing that we face is contributing to the Exodus. When there's a nursing shortage on the floor, nurses still have to get the work done. We are working with patients that require care and assistance and the lack of available staff doesn't prevent us from delivering, doesn't take away the needs of the patient. Instead, the responsibility falls on nurses who are on schedule, who already have a designated patient load and responsibilities. By the time COVID came around, the lack of emergency preparedness, PPE equipments, and shortages increased the stress we face in the hospital. And this has driven nurses out of the profession, many who are committed to patient care and patient quality. Employers need to take the effects of staffing shortage on nurses more seriously. There needs to be enforcement on nurse-patient ratios that requires employers to hire and retain nurses that are needed to run the facility and care for the patients. We also need to explore initiatives that will effectively retain nurses in the profession. We want to be able to work safely in our environment with enough nurses to safely care for patients and keep our community healthy. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you, all ladies, and coming from the hospital near me. So I know, we have to do everything we can for the nurses' staffing ratio. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you all. If there is anyone present... Thank you all. If there is anyone present in the room or on the Zoom that hasn't had the chance to testify, please raise your hand.
All right. Seeing no one else, I would like to note that written testimonies, which will be reviewed in full by committee staff, may be submitted to the record up to seventy-two hours after the close of the hearing by emailing to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair Narcissus, we have concluded the public testimony for this hearing.
So I want to say thank you to everyone that stayed in the room even if it's a long process. You're committed to the cause and so am I. And our team is gonna work to do whatever we can to look into it, to make sure we address the inequities that we're talking about in healthcare delivery system, which are the backbone, which are nurses. So I thank you for your time and I have to say thank you to my policy analysts that stay with me, Manu Butt and my Chief of Staff, Sayyid Joseph, and Deputy Chief of Staff, Frank Shea, and everyone in the room. Thank you so much. And everyone, my colleagues still online with me, thank you. So I appreciate the time of everyone. Let's work and let's get it done. Like I said, I'm very optimistic because health is wealth. Let's do it. Thank you.